Scholars from over at West Hamlin, so you guys will meet one another when you get to about the ninth grade. Alright, go ahead.
With that, I'm gonna ask everyone to stand for the pledge and we're gonna let Hamlin and West Hamlin students lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, West Hamlin would like to endorse the pledge.
I believe in myself and my ability to do my best at all times. I will act in such a way that I will be proud of myself and others will be proud of me too. I will not waste this day because this day will never come again.
I've been here eleven years and I believe that's the best pledge of allegiance we've had. As we get ready to start a meeting, I will give you a date to remember if you'd like to fish. June the 2nd, we have our fishing tournament at Mud River Dan Lake. And we encourage all students to come, it's free, we feed you and have prizes and things like that. Some of you may have participated. But our goal is, and we'll give you T-shirts to show up that day, that says basically, hooked on fishing, not drugs. Because we are highly concerned here at this commission about all people, but particularly young people, making good decisions when it comes to what do I do to make my body stay healthy? And drugs is the worst thing. And I mean drugs, cigarettes the same thing, but it is a drug. So we just need to, as adults here, if we can help you guys make good decisions, we're certainly willing to do that. We hope by you guys participating in special programs and your school involved, that it helps you become better adults as you grow. Because it's certainly not easy out there, lots of tough decisions to be made and you go back and make them except you. But we do think that we're on the right track and we know that by you all being involved and your adults, people being involved, your teachers, it does make a difference having people there to help you. So we're just glad that you take time and come and visit us and be involved. And if something comes up at your school that concerns you, be sure to find some adult and talk to them about it. Counselor, teacher, principal, cook, whomever. Welcome and glad you're here.
This session, the Lincoln County Commission, April the 19th, 2012 at 10:00 a.m. is now called and ordered. Members present is Merleview Clerk, Charles McCann, President, Charles Vance, Commissioner, Thomas Ramey, Jr., Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes in the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April the 5th, 2012 at 6:00 p.m.
So, who can say?
In motion, second, that'd be an all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is Sue Burton, Michelle Ross with the West Hamlin Patrols.
We have prepared, one of our patrols would like to speak on our behalf.
Before she speaks, she would like for you to tell the qualifications for becoming a patrol.
Oh, sure. When they are in fourth grade, close like after the west test, we, they fill out applications and they must write and tell us why they think they would be an appropriate safety patrol, a good patrol for the following year. And some of the things that they write are they're honest, they're trustworthy, they're responsible, they get their work finished, they help around the house, they help with little kids at home, or they babysit. They have to keep up with their grades, they have to turn in assignments, they cannot get two behavior slips, or they're out. And they of course cannot be suspended, which as you can see, I've got a good group of kids here. And then we interview them and ask them what they think they can do for us and how they plan to be a safety patrol. And from that, we choose our safety patrols.
And maybe just, what do they do?
They help put students on the bus at the end of the day, the kindergarten students. They assist in the hallways, they assist in the cafeteria, holding the doors open, open up ketchup packets for little kids, things like that. They hall monitor, they make sure that the bathrooms stay free of clutter and people. I have patrols of boys and a girl at each bathroom. We have each patrol, all of our kindergarten classes have a patrol, two patrols that go to their room. They can go in the morning and read to them, cut out stuff, whatever they need to be, help the teacher out. But at the end of the day, they go back and help them put them on the bus. And we change jobs every nine weeks, so they get to feel around. We have readers at the front door.
Sounds like they're pretty important people.
Yeah, we drop off, when we drop off in the morning, they have little kids that need stuff carried or help, they take them to the classroom in the morning, they're great.
Hi, my name is Autumn Gibson and I'm fifth grade patrol at West Hamlin Elementary School. First, I would like to thank you on behalf of the patrols for purchasing safety patrol belts at the beginning of the year. We are requesting a donation of $100 to purchase our admission tickets, as well as patrol T-shirts to Candy Park on May 30th. Our lunch and transportation will be provided by the school in our PTO. West Hamlin Elementary Patrols have worked hard all year. Some of our duties include monitoring hallways, holding doors, greeting visitors, and walking the students to and from buses. To be a safety patrol at West Hamlin Elementary, a student must be responsible, trustworthy, and honest. Please consider our request, thank you for your time and support of the students of Lincoln County.
Thank you, very good job. Anyone else, any other students got anything they want?
That's what she's got for us.
Whoa. Yes, we like those.
Now, are you all collecting these at school?
Yes.
I think you better believe it.
We get us so many boxes and then we take them to the wrong McDonald's, so we appreciate it, it does something good.
When you come see us, bring a big truck.
Is this a small amount?
Oh, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, at this juncture, I would entertain them to provide the request of $800.
Second.
Motion, second, all yes, motion carries. And you all be sure to have a good time when you go to Candy Park.
They will represent.
I'd love to learn it, please do.
Allison and I were singing Matthew Riley the other day.
We would love to know that.
We promise you, if you will give us the words, they will light.
I'm sorry, we may have to have Judy sing so bad.
Kids will love it.
Mr. King sings to us all the time. Bree's getting sun too, so come on over.
On behalf of West Hamlin, I would like to say thank you this year for all your support. The commission is so wonderful and strong school. We've got to do a lot of things through you all's help that normally we wouldn't get to do. And we've got to help a lot of kids that normally wouldn't have without your all's help. And we so appreciate it.
I just hope that you're able to continue to do what you've been doing and get through school and choose wherever, you know, path you decide to go of education, get more education once you leave high school. And if you can find a job around here, come back to Lincoln County and help us maintain the county. But we have a hard time of finding quality people and keeping quality people because jobs are scarce here. But we love the county and we love to think that as an old guy like me steps down, that there's some young people who wants to come up and do a better job than I have. But we, our future depends on you guys. We appreciate you being involved and stay with that education.
And we would like to say to the county commission.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome, and you're certainly welcome to come back. Even if you don't have to ask for money, just come back and visit and maybe critique us and see how we're done, if we follow the way to conduct meetings well enough to get by. Sometimes we may not, but we always encourage people to help us. Thank you again for being here, and I know you're dying to hurry up and get back to school.
They're excited they're studying west tests.
And no school tomorrow?
No school tomorrow.
That's what I heard.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, good to be here. You know, we never, none of these kids need this money unless you guys ask, so we really appreciate you helping you all.
Normally, the AAA used to support patrols and they don't do that anymore, so thank you all so much. We'll let you know how much fun we had.
Next thing on the agenda is we have Paula Nelson and the Lincoln County High School Forensics Team.
Y'all wanna come forward, it'd be nice. Come on, help you ones. You look off your shirt. This is when you get down to serious stuff.
She's a junior this year.
I'm Alan Ellis, I'm a junior this year.
I'm Alyssa Hager and I'm also a junior.
I'm Hannah Matthews, I'm a senior this year.
Molly Oak, I'm a senior this year and captain of the speech team. Basically, over the past few years, our team has gone to many state tournaments and we've grown very, very strong. What we do is the debate part, which we'll explain.
We have several different types of debate we do. We have a one-on-one person debate where you must prepare arguments for both sides because you never know if you're for the topic or against it, so you have to use your thinking skills. And then we have two-on-two person debate where you have a team, you have to learn how to work with your partner and be on the same page with issues. And we've done fairly well, we had some semifinalists at the state level this year. We also have Alan Ellis who's qualified to go to national.
In the one-on-one debate?
Yes.
Okay, backlist.
And the speech part consists of anything from actually doing a speech, which Alyssa does, or even some acting events, which is mainly what I do. We are both going to nationals for these events. We've accumulated, as a team, this year at tournaments in the state and at the state tournament, as a team overall, we've gotten third place, which is a great thing because we fall right behind the two largest high schools, which is Willing Park High School and Huntington High School. Individually, we've accumulated over 100 awards.
Just this year.
Just this year, we worked very hard all year, starting right at the beginning of the school year. This year, we were lucky enough to have five of our competitors qualify for the national level in Baltimore, Maryland this year, which is a huge deal. Going to nationals opens a lot of doors.
And that brings us to why we're here today.
Yes.
Tell us about it.
Since we have five qualifying, that means we have to take the county cars to get there, which means gas, and then we have to account for lodging and things like that. And since there are so many of us, it's probably gonna be approximately 6,000. So we're working hard to, we're gonna do a car wash on April 28th if you guys are interested. For donations. But since it's so close to the wire, we just found out the five of us are going, we are asking for donation today.
You can spend, you'll refund it, right?
In our plan?
And who's your sponsor?
We have several.
Who's your teacher sponsor?
Paula Nelson.
And do I hear that this might be the last roundup?
It's my last, right? June 4th, it's all on the thirty years.
We call this year Paula's farewell tour.
We're trying to get word about getting some money for nationals because it's really, since we have so many competitors going to nationals, it's very important. This opens doors for scholarships, college scouts, everyone. Colleges, teachers from across the country will see us and we'll get Lincoln County's name out there.
Not only that, but speech debate is a big deal for a lot of us. It's motivated us to go and do and put ourselves out there. And we're comfortable speaking in front of a crowd.
Also, the two girls on the end here, they're willing to skip their own graduation in order to go and compete at this national tournament. So you can really tell how important and sentimental this is for them.
We will be skipping graduation.
That's the only way out of the excuse you just skipped.
In fact, because of forensics, I actually went to a forensics camp in Fairfax, Virginia, at George Mason University. And upcoming seniors were allowed to audition for the forensics team and they're ranked second nationally. And I was accepted. And I will just follow up, be going to George Mason University to be on their speech team to do forensics in college. So, thank you, speech is very important to us.
I'm hoping that you all motivate 100 class to get involved.
We have several freshmen on the team that are very excited.
We have about 18 active competitors. And several of these students do multiple events, four, five, six events every time they go to a tournament. So they're just multi-talented and passing on to other kids. She mentioned, we came to you and asked you to help us go to camp. And we managed to get enough money together between what the commission gave us and what we could raise. And each child alone had paid $75 to go to a very expensive speech camp.
I was one of the students that got the opportunity to go to camp and it was such a great experience for me. And learning from things like that has made me make like life-changing decisions. Because of speech debate, I'm actually going to WVU to study political science and women's studies and hopefully head to law school, so that's kind of a big deal for me.
And she just received a very prestigious scholarship.
How many of you are under 12?
We're eleven graders, but we're all going to nationals soon.
And I'm returning to nationals as well as Alan.
And we also have memorials on weekends, for sure.
We'll be competing that Friday and that Saturday.
And whatever mountain we give you, if there is any left over, put it in the tank fund to go send other kids to be there. I don't know how much we need, but I know we gave the band $3,000, so I'd entertain motions for about $3,000.
Before we conclude, did you wanna say something, Snossen?
I'm sorry, passing notes.
Let me call for a vote. I think we got motion, second, then all yes vote, motion carries, Q ends.
Okay, well, I'm just proud of them and I know every one of you up there and I know how supportive you are of all these things. Seeing those young kids in there, you know, I've got great kids that I wanna see do things like that and you've helped make this possible for them. I hope you continue to support the speech and debate team if we have one next year. It's kinda up in the air, but you are changing lives when you help us do this. And I'm really proud of them, that's all I can say. Over and over and over. We thank you.
Okay, next, the next thing y'all need to do is a ham work of fifth grade class.
Y'all have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Bring home a trophy.
I also wanna invite you to Susie Paul, the music man. May the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at the high school, morning, afternoon, we have some great schools coming. And we are using grant money that economic development people helped us get. And we're gonna try to put a dinner theater together, at least a cupcake dessert thing. So come on out and see it, we're really ridiculous.
Who do we have here? We've heard your story introduced, who's the spokesperson?
On this, Mr. McCann, before she gets started, I just wanna brag on, this is just some representatives from our whole fifth grade class at Hamlin PKA. And we couldn't shuffle everybody in, we've been here before and it's been a little crowded. But I wanna say, this is a wonderful group of students, I'm really proud of them. And not only do I get the pleasure and the privilege to work with them every day, but I have a wonderful group of supportive parents. And they're here to talk about our fifth grade trip that we're going on, which I think hasn't been done in a number of years. But we feel like we have a lot of students that haven't been out of the state or haven't been out of the county or haven't had opportunities to go places. And we want, excuse me, we really want them to have the opportunities to see things and to learn in an environment outside of the school environment. Because I feel like you learn so much from getting to go places and see different things and meet different people and, you know, and it's a rich experience that I feel like you get to bring back to our county and be a part. And these children have worked, not us, they have worked on fundraisers. And last Sunday, we did a spaghetti dinner and the kids cut up all the desserts and served drinks. And they have worked tirelessly. In addition to the service projects they're doing, last week, they just took a bunch of stuff up to the nursing home supplies and things for the patients over here. And they read to younger children, they're really making an impact on their community. And I'm really, I'm really proud of the work that they do.
I appreciate hearing that and knowing that there's somebody out there helping guide them.
I'm Catherine Blainship, the student council president. Here, I'm going to read a letter from the fifth grade. Dear Commissioners, Field trips provide the opportunity to connect abstract classroom learning to real-world experiences. The importance of field trips cannot be underestimated. If we are able to make real-world connection to classroom learning, the learning takes on significance and directs our attention and engagement. If we are engaged, meaningful learning can start to take place. As fifth grade students at Hamlin PKA 3A, we have the opportunity to attend a school trip to Colonial Williamsburg and Busch Gardens, Williamsburg, Virginia, May 18th through 20th, 2012. Every student has worked hard and put a great deal of effort into raising money so that we can be able to attend this trip. And we're thrilled to have an opportunity to attend and visit historical locations and learn about different parts of our country and world. In order to represent the community on this trip, we need to raise approximately like 4,500 more to reach our goal of 11,000. The money is necessary to cover up transportation, accommodation, and admission fees. Can the fifth grade students of Hamlin PKA 3A count on your support? We really, we realize that in our county, you support many worthy causes. Any amount you can donate will be greatly appreciated and will go directly toward funding this important educational experience. Please call our sponsoring teacher, Candace Fashion, at 304-824-3836 if you'd like more information. Thank you in advance for your generous donation.
Okay, I got a test question for you. What state are you gonna be visiting?
Virginia.
Very good. One of the things we certainly are glad to be going, I know that any time you're able to do something together as a group, it's good. If you can take a trip and get back safe, it's a wonderful experience. And it's probably one of the things that it's hard to evaluate sometimes for me. You know, we talk about the academics, we talk about the safety we've had here this morning, but just wanting to have fun is important because I believe that school should be fun. You gotta learn, but it should be fun, you should have something to remember. That education is not something you don't want, it's something that you need and you want. So it's important, I think, that all of us remember that, that, you know, being a kid is so important, to have fun when you're there. So we certainly want to help on that, I don't know how much value you put on that, but I'd be willing to save maybe $1,500 to help on the trip. We have a motion to that. Motion, second, all yes vote, motion carries, and you better have a good time. Candace, you check with Judy at some point and she'll help you.
Thank you so much, we are so appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do y'all want war they fought over there in Williamsburg? It's way back. And before his time. You'll know when you get over there, it's really, really an interesting place. Don't tell them, they'll find out. Right, right.
He'd come back and kill us.
Thank you all so much for giving us this opportunity.
You guys, it's continuing school, right? Thank you. You can stay or you can go, I know you wanna get back to school, right?
Yes, we do.
Some of them do.
The next thing I'll be a junior is Jim Hawes.
Welcome, Jim, we don't wanna give you any money. You've got, you've got a hairdresser's signature.
Oh yeah, I get two a year. I just don't time them right sometimes. I was getting a little shaky, so can't roll the windows down in the car anymore. But anyway, real quick, I brought you all a copy, this is your small cities application on the Francis Creek Project. And it's complete, the only thing we need is the infrastructure comments, so brought that for your records. What I'm here for today though is to discuss the 10-mile pre-coming building assembly project. And do have a drawdown request today, this is drawdown request number six, in the amount of $167,208.94. And includes as part of this drawdown request is one invoice from FAMCO in the same amount. And just to give you a little quick update on the project, contract right now, it stands as of the end of the billing, which was at the end of March, is about 27% complete. So they're actually a little bit ahead of schedule. And that's just with one crew. Contractor's indicating he's finishing up a job in another county and hopes to be putting two crews out there working. So hopefully that will even put them a little further ahead. Lion, or tank contractor has not started yet, but they did indicate to the engineer that they hope to start getting in there to do some excavating and things of that nature by the end of May. So, but they've given May or June as their times of when it starts. But I would think more likely than not by the end of May. But anyway, that's the quick update on that project and also with this drawdown request, you all's approval.
Did your motion to accept this request? Motion, second, all yes, motion carries. So it's still kinda looking like October's finished or nothing?
That's still the deadline, yeah, that's, that's under contract, that's when they have to. And if you look at the progress report that's attached to the engineer's estimate, that's when they're showing the lead completed. That's with the, with the original work, if there's any money left or something, they have some change order work or something like that, they will probably get a time extension to complete that work. But all the original construction that was anticipated is contractually supposed to be done by October.
While we're signing it, not talking about water, the rand to Randall Look. While we're signing it, I'm not talking about water, the friends who ran the list and with the engineering firm, he said it'd be good if the county commission would start maybe making some contacts on behalf of the Ranger Bottom Project, Francis Big Kid, or ARC, if they applied and need to sort of work that up, Judy's already prepared a letter or text from us, but it'd be good if you let anybody just talk to them about it.
Yeah, ARC, we submitted that one back in November, generally ARC, their timeframe for announcing those is around May or June, it was a little bit later last year, I think it was in July, before they actually made those announcements, but if, if they're going by previous years, again, we'd be looking at May or June for them this year to start making those announcements, so, if you can speak with them, I'd do so soon. Quick update on a couple of the projects, Upper Little Harsh Creek, of course, that one's substantially complete, a couple of the Rick Roberts on that, the only thing keeping us from closing that out is the, the contractor does have some punchless items that still need to be addressed, and they've been waiting for the weather to clear on that one, so hopefully they'll be in pretty soon, and we'll finish up all the activities on that one. And also on the Big Hearts project, which is our new project, I do have the environmental completed for that one, I was going to bring that to you all's first meeting of May, it indicated that you're probably not going to have that meeting, so we'll have that here on the 17th, you all signature, and we'll also have a combined notice, it's called Request for Release of Funds, and finding notice of impact, and we'll have you all submit that, once you all submit that, and we submit it to the development office, that'll, that'll undergo a 15-day comment period at the state level.
No, this council meeting's not going to interfere with that?
No, 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 we had an ad, but we just redated the ad, and that'll, that'll actually, the ad should run around May 3rd, and, and, because you'll have a 15-day comment period at the local level, which will expire on the 17th, which is the day we'll have everything here for your signature, and then like I said, it'll go to the state, and that'll start a 15-day comment period. So by first, second week of June, you know, we should all be through that environmental process, and the money should be plumb at that time. So, all right, that's all I had today, and appreciate it, and if you all need anything for us, just let us know.
Mr. Golf.
Well, thank you.
When do you foresee the Francis Creek project?
Francis Creek was just submitted, it, yeah, I, that's the application that I just gave the county commission, that was submitted, that had to be submitted by March 26th to West Virginia Development Office, that'll start undergoing a review process, actually they probably have started that already, small cities generally won't make any announcements until around October, November of this year.
So probably it'll be completed by 2013?
October, November, then you're probably looking at a year to get the engineering done on that, and get through the environmental clearance process, it could conceivably be bid by, yeah, by the end of 2013.
So it'd be bid by 2013?
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's, that's, you know, if all went well, and we didn't have any problems with land acquisitions, that's what usually seems to be the holdup, but if we didn't have any holdups for that, yeah, we'd go by 2013, and then we'd look at a one-year construction period on that one, so.
That's also saying if we get funded?
If it gets funded, yes. And I think the proposed funding on that one was Small Cities Block Grant and Infrastructure Council, so, you know, it's sort of contingent upon, Infrastructure Council's not going to commit until Small Cities does, so like I say, it is contingent upon whether or not Small Cities actually does fund that this year.
I found out something from the Logan PSD, when the water company comes around and asks you to sign the petition for water in your area, and most people do, that if you don't tap into the water for two years, you end up having to pay the Logan PSD $16.47 per two years, it's in the fine print, but it was not explained to me personally, but that is part of the...
If you sign up, it's for a minimum bill.
So, but even if you're not tapped into the water, you still end up having to pay for two years, according to the Logan PSD, $16.47.
I would have to look at their specific user agreement, yeah, but, but there's generally a minimum fee on those projects.
But you don't have to sign it, you're good to say I do not want it.
Yeah, you can decline it.
You can decline it, but when they came around, they were trying to get names for, you know, the water lines.
You've got to get probably 80% or something.
Of course, when you decline it, and then, you know, if they come by and then you decide you want water, at that point, essentially you have to pay...
Oh yeah, I know that, but I mean, like me personally, I signed the petition because I wanted my neighbors to have water, I have good water, so I also paid the tap fee, and then last month I got a bill, so I called them up, and I said, why am I getting a bill when I'm not even receiving your water? And they said, oh, when they came around and took the petition up...
Yeah, if you sign that.
You signed the petition, but it was not explained by the person taking the petition that if you did not sign up and, and tap onto the water fee, that you would pay $16.47 per month for two years. So, I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, and I would have to, I'd have to look at their, their actual user agreement on that, but that's generally what it depends, because a lot of it's dealt with...
So you're going to pay if you sign the petition, and don't tap into the water, personally?
Um, I mean, like I say, it depends on that user agreement, that particular user agreement.
That's the user agreement for...
Yeah, the other objection is, is depending on the funding source, if you don't have at least 80% sign up, the project won't be, won't be constructed, so, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a hell of a short...
Sure.
Yeah.
But it should have been explained prior to people signing up.
Oh, I agree, I agree, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
My name is Henry Mills, I want to know what Big Ugly is on the map, because we, we keep getting promises that we may get water, we may get water, she's talking about her $16, I spend more than that going to Walmart to get bottled water every month, for just my wife and I, and we've been hoping someday in the future of getting water that is usable, I've got well water that my dog won't drink, so I don't know what to tell you, but I'd like to know where we are in the future, of what the plans are, because when I had talked about it before, I found that we were under the Logan PSD, it's like we're in Oregon, if we've got to go that way.
Yeah.
Because they're not going to help us.
I think the holdup on that one right now is, they do have a project that should, actually, I think last month it actually received authorization from the Public Service Commission to, to proceed, but that's over on Anchor Road area, and I think that's, if that is with Logan County PSD, I think that's been the holdup as far as extending that water further north, is, is they've had that Anchor Road project held up. But now that has gone through the Public Service Commission, does have authorization to, to proceed to construction phase.
Well, could we get a mail-out to our residents there, so we would understand what is going on with this?
Yeah, and I can check with, with Mr. Basden, who's the manager now at Logan PSD, and just see where you all are prioritized, you know, with their future projects, I do know there had been an engineering report done for that though, because we'd actually received a copy of the, the engineering for the water project in Big Ugly.
And there is money already on the table, already approved for two miles, from where it comes over Big Creek, down Big Ugly, but that got done, Governor Manchin was in there, the money's is there, Logan PSD is self-help, and they're going to do it, they keep telling us, we keep reminding them, let's get that two miles done, I don't know how far it goes down.
It goes down to the Boe County line, that's where it is, the Boe County and Logan County line, and that's it.
Yep, I don't know, they're going to pick it up and go down to where Eldridge is living, it's two miles down to there, that's where it's going to go, the money's there to do that, but that's as far as the money is right now, but that's already been approved, but it's under the Logan PSD self-help, just like the Mans knob and a couple other places, they're assured us that they're going to get it done, but Governor Manchin got that taken care of, and the checks sent in hidden, delegate Eldridge worked that out back three years ago or something, and the money's there, we've got the money already, just waiting, you know, Logan PSD to actually do the work, and they've assured us they are going to do these, there's three or four projects self-help in Lincoln by Logan PSD, one of them's Coal Branch, above the Harsh School up there, another one's Mans knob, one is Big Ugly, and there may be another one, but it's just one of those deals that we've got some money to do with, but Logan PSD has hadn't got it done yet, and they will get it done, maybe not as quick as it needs to be, but they will get it done, so they just keep telling us we're going to get it done.
All right, thank you for your attention. Okay, and if you give me your contact information, I'll let you know what I can find out from this. So I'll get that from here in just a second.
Thank you, Jim.
That's all we have, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is Larry Stutler with the Lincoln EDA.
Welcome Larry.
This is just our regular yearly or annual resolution to continue the LED program, the LED grant, and the county commission's contribution this year, they changed the, the application a little bit to this year's Assistant Investment Pledge Form, so I was attending for G30, so those two papers are filling out. Also took the liberty of putting together to kind of frame our conversation, what it is we're talking about, what specific part of the EDA we're talking about today, and made a little flow chart there that may help explain as we go along, as I explain some of the ways that we operate, made a copy for each of you. Basically, what I'm asking is, first of all, for a resolution, that resolution that you have in your hand, the president, to be approved, for the EDA to go forward, you'll notice in that resolution, it does mention that we will pursue a CDC or a certified development community status, we already have that, but that's something you have to re-qualify for every three years, and so we're now, within about a year and a half, have to qualify again for that particular program, and that's essentially all that is. The other form that I gave you was the community, was the county commission's participation in funding the operations of the EDA, and the reason I handed you that little form, or that little chart was, that today we're going to be talking about operations, it's a whole lot more fun when I come here and we get to talk about projects, or about support roles, or direct projects that we may be working on, or even prospects, but today we have to talk about operations, because we have to, each nonprofit in existence has to look at funding. Funding is under pressure for everyone, for all, probably all nonprofit agencies, including economic development authorities, in the last few years, and just to give you an instance or some examples, we basically have four categories of funding, this is how we turn the lights on every day. One is the state of West Virginia, West Virginia Development Office, our LED grant. Two is county commissions, and this is true of all West Virginia, all county commissions. The third for us is our private business donations, that we solicit each year from all the businesses in the county, to help in our operational expenses, and the fourth is our interest income. Let me give you how that's, how those revenues have tracked in the last few years. The funding we get from the West Virginia Development Office is down 9%, and has been in the last two years. Funding from the county commission is down 9%, which is reflective of the development of us. Our contributions from private business donations are down 50% from an average of five years before I came, and our interest income is down 71%. Now, the reason for some of these decreases, obviously with our businesses, we realize that in the last few years, we've had some rather trying times economically through recession and what have you, our interest income is down markedly because of the, well, we've got a bunch of loans that are non-performing loans, we've had to turn over $159,000 of them for collection. I have two board members here today, Gary Calister, and of course Commissioner Ramey, and they can tell you that we work with this each meeting to assess what our revenues are, as well as our expenses, and as revenues have been under pressure, we've also addressed the expense side, fortunately, we've been able to reduce that as well, to the tune of about 36% that we've taken off of the expenses. And the way we've done that, some of it's been through, you know, just buckling down, and some of it just happened, for instance, one example, I like to say it was my great management, but it's, that's not, that's not totally true, and here's why, my assistant and myself, in my case, my wife has great health insurance, I'm on her policy, Shelley's in the same situation with Lee, we don't require health insurance, so the company or the agency doesn't have any health insurance expense, and that's a hefty sum, that we were able to avoid just because of our situations. So we've reduced those expenses, but I would like to ask that the county commission support the EDA for the coming year to the tune of $40,000 this year, that's, I think, a major part of our budget, that with the West Virginia Development Office.
Question, discussion, what did we, what did we say last?
Last year was one of the down years, the last two years have been $31,000, actually $31,008.
I would just like to say, also as the executive director of a nonprofit, every nonprofit has goals, objectives, and, and if you really work toward meeting those goals and objectives, however, when you are financially strapped, and you have to spend every waking moment of things trying to raise money, you're not able to really focus on the mission statement, and I know that at the EDA, I know Mr. McAllister would agree, I think we've made great strides lately in thinking about the money that we have to operate with, and the successes that we've had, things have been remarkable, and I think this is an investment, while the local businesses are not able to invest at the rate they were at one time, I think that the EDA is even more important now than ever with the state of the economy, and that's why at this point I would make the motion for the $40,000.
And I'll speak just briefly, we'd have to, we'll have to, if the motion passes, and I asked Judy just getting into this, how much did we put in the budget come July? And it's $34,000, so we'll have to address that carryover when the time comes, to bring it up to the $40,000. Is there any discussion on it?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, I have, are you just, you talking to these people that donated before, and they're just saying that we don't have the money, or, I mean, you know?
In a lot of cases.
Your board of directors knows who you've been talking to trying to get this money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Absolutely, and one of the things we want to do in the future, is probably get the board back engaged in that process, because I think really, they're better fundraisers than we are, and that's one of the principles of having our board, as you well know, is their associations in business community, so, we've got an aggressive agenda to try to increase revenue.
Not having, Chamber of Commerce always hurts us.
Exactly, and so it's just part of operations, that's one of the four areas we get our funding from, and requires my attention.
You know, I just wondered, you know, you've had McDonald's come in, you've had the other store out there for auto parts and things like that, I mean, to me it seems like we're getting more business, I know of the parts we are, even though we're seeing more business, and I don't know how much of a role the EDA played in those businesses getting here, one question I have is, what's the development office going to give you this year?
$31,08. Now, the development office in giving us that, you know, that's our base amount, there's times that they have other programs available that we can apply for, but those are project-specific, it's not operations.
If we would pass the $40,000, realizing it's $6,000 short in the budget, if for some reason we passed voted on it pending enough carryover to supplement the budget, does that hurt your...
No.
You know?
As long as we can have the pledge form, as long as we can have the pledge form filled out, and it's over the base amount, then we'd be fine.
Would it be adverse to you if we just went with the $34,000, I mean, would that affect you, I mean, I mean, other than being $6,000, so what I'm thinking is, if we went ahead with what we'd already budgeted, then if you needed more, go to it, I mean, to me, it makes a little more sense doing it that way than it would be to go ahead and give an additional $6,000 on top of what we've already budgeted, and, you know, I, I guess my question is, is I want to make sure people's monies, the taxpayers' money, get as much bang for their buck as they can.
Sure, absolutely.
And to me, unless you can show me, you know, what you're doing, that would suggest we should go ahead and increase this by almost 25% of what we give last year, I don't think I can support it.
I would just say that as a member of that board, Gary, if you have anything you'd like to say, feel free to jump in, but for us to meet at irregular meetings and be nickel and dime to death, and not be able to make the kinds of decisions, and not be able to purchase paper or whatever it is in the office, and I just think that it's a, it's a request that is reasonable.
Well, and, and if I may interject, I agree with your premise that we should be, of course, getting the most bang for the taxpayers' buck, and I think we do that, there's various instances that we have managed, I think, really well for the county, and I might point out on your chart, as we manage the operations function, it increases our balance sheet, and the balance sheet is basically a list of assets that ultimately belongs to the county, and we improve on those assets, we don't diminish them, when we can operate on a balanced budget, and that's where I'm trying to get us to.
Well, I know you had the breakfast and business things, and I wonder, did you attempt at that time to solicit funding for the EDA, talk to these businesses?
Not, not in that venue, we didn't know.
You know, to say, look, we can really help you guys if you can help us a little bit now, so, I mean, you know, that, that's the kind of, I was, you know, just wondering about, because I didn't attend any of them, so I don't know what the discussions were about, but you know, if you're, if you know you're going to be that strapped for cash, and a lot of, a lot of businesses will invest in things they think's going to help lean them, you know, things that they're going to benefit from things, but... things that they're going to benefit from and things, but I know some people that attended, I, one of the questions I posed to them was, you know, were they addressed as far as funding the EDA and things like that? And it wasn't done, so.
No. We didn't feel like that was the venue for that. Now, perhaps it could be. We were open to suggestion, that's for sure.
Yeah, because I mean, I would a lot rather, you know, get personal, people's money that's going directly, you know, contributed into the EDA that's going directly benefit than having everybody's taxpayer's money go to it. You know what I mean? They're not, most people aren't starting businesses and things like that, even though we all benefit from it.
Right.
So somewhere along the line, I think we need to be a little more aggressive approaching those businesses that we have.
We can do a better job, there's no question.
And, you know, and talking, I know the natural gas people are really down as far as, you know, the prices of gas and things like that, with the Marcella Sheldrill and things like that. I think we need to be proactive and try to get them to contribute to the county.
Well, some of the things, you give, like, big amounts don't anymore. They give like half that. You take like a electric company and all those, they give a lot less than they used to.
Yeah. I'd like, you know, make sure that we systematically address that as far as those businesses and things like that.
You're correct.
You know, see what they can contribute and things, because I know for just the, yeah, okay, Gary, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment, when we have, was going, going over our budget stuff, Larry just cut that. I personally think he's cut it too much. He has cut it down and down, and I told him, the only way he could possibly cut it anymore, and I made his comment, maybe, is to shut the office down and have a tenant out, out long as I don't know. One of the things, if he's got a meeting in Oregon now, he'll get up at 3:00 AM in the morning, drive up to the meeting, drive right straight back, and say, look, we got a hotel and stuff like that, but, I mean, what I seen, I think, I think he went, cut himself too much. I mean, he was really trying.
But, you know, and the other thing is on these loans that went to liquid and things that you've had to turn over to collection, are you doing any good on those as far as getting any of those settled?
We haven't got the first nickel. We've had, actually, to spend money on that just for process serving, that's cost us almost two thousand, that operating budget, to try to collect. We're in on a situation where there's a split, those attorney fees are very expensive on that, to try to get some of that money back, and those particular individuals are in the, are in, currently being served with notice that we're taking them to court, and we have actual dates set up in some cases. So we are taking action on those delinquent accounts, which is quite hefty. And, you know, a sign of the times, perhaps, probably. My job is not to analyze really at this point why they're in arrears, but to try to, first of all, we try to get them up current, and if they just can't not do it or won't do it, whichever the case may be, then we have to take action, because again, you're dealing with public money when you really think about it. And I, you know, we don't disagree with anything you're saying in terms of the public money. I think as my board members mentioned, we try to be very careful with it. I have one more item that I'm working on that may save us another five percent. And bear in mind, when I say that we're trying to balance the budget, we're not starving. We're trying to make sure our balanced, that our budget is balanced and that we're not eroding the balance sheet to exist, because that's not doing, that's taking taxpayers' money through the back door, really. And what I'm trying to do is say, here, we want to operate upfront. Some of the things, just as a quick example, a couple of quick examples that we've done, we were looking at an industrial access road for the, for the, for the park. We would have been basically on the, what I call on the hook, and that's not a very businesslike term, but we would for $450,000, but we would have had to bring in that much investment at a, at a certain ratio in five years. We elected not to go that way. We now have a nice access road, two lane, that's totally paid for, don't owe a nickel one. We don't owe anybody, we owe nothing to anyone. I thought that was a better use of money because ultimately those responsibilities fall back to the county if we couldn't get that level of investment in. Our website, you've probably been on it, it's very nice. We had bids of over $10,000 to redo our website. I was able to get it done for $1,800, wrote a lot of it myself, and frankly, wrote a grant for the $1,800, so it actually cost us nothing out of operations. That's the kind of thing we're trying to do to stretch those dollars as far as possible. We agree with that it's a serious matter when we're dealing with public money and the stewardship of public money. I will always agree with you on that.
But it's also, I guess, I'm not one of those people that are able to see into the future, but I do know that if you don't spend money, you're not going to make money.
Right.
And if you don't have at least enough to have room for, have some vision, I get concerned. Then you get stymied and you just give up almost, and I don't want to see that, because I really think EDA is making improvements, it has since its inception, and I know that you're operating with, from the time I used to be on the board, you got one less employee, if I remember right. So I know you're trying to be, you know, close on managing your money, your finances, but we definitely, you know, some people might question the decision of the commission here previously this morning as to the amounts of money we have spent on our use. But I look at it as an investment. We don't know the outcome, but it's, it's a judgment call, you have to make, and looking into the future.
It is.
And, and I feel good about it, really having that opportunity to sit here and be one of the three members that can be part of that. And I, you know, look at the EDA, I don't know what the answer is. I know that you guys are trying, I know when I was on there, you tried, I know when, previously, we tried different things. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, but you gotta try.
Right.
Definitely the road that you've mentioned there is an impressive accomplishment down at the business park, and I know that we're in the negotiations right now with the healthcare people, trying to get the helicopter and lease a piece of property.
Right.
Which will be at least a ten-year piece of income that you may be able to get once you get it done, but we don't know that for sure, but I think it's all working out. But, but I know we have to have something there, a presence to show people, look what we have got, but we could be better, but you can't do it without funds, I don't think.
We're going to have the funds, and a lot of those funds, as we get them, you know, that's where we do look forward to it, look forward to some of your upper level, you're prospecting your direct projects. Now, direct projects more often than not are funded directly with another source, but then just your support roles and the fact of your everyday functions of servicing the loans that we have and that sort of thing. So it's a, it is an expensive endeavor. The county has been supportive and are certainly are supportive, and we appreciate that. And we're trying to let people know, I know, one of the things we do in our Pride and Progress edition of the paper, that's one of the ways we have of trying to get the message out to the county, this is what we're doing, this is how we're playing our role and the job that, position you all set in, you oversee a lot of roles, and you keep us all in chorus and working together hopefully across the county to, to promote and develop the county. So as one player in that or one participant in that, we appreciate your leadership. We think that our request is justified, even though with the thirty-four mount, all we're really looking at is five hundred a month difference.
And I would ask one other thing, that you, if you are able to get this additional $6,000, that you not put it on salaries, that goes for projects, programs, things like that, but that's a decision of the board, but that's just my.
I don't think that there's a chance of that. We work with very minimal salaries and.
I know, it's just.
We don't, I have sought no increases since I've been there. Shelley doesn't either. Like I said, we don't take a medical benefit because we don't really need it. I'm fortunate that my wife has been in insurance for quite a while and has a great plan, so I'm on hers, knowing what she pays for it. I'm glad I'm on hers, but we don't want that part of the record shown.
Anyway, I would encourage my fellow commissioners to join me, I will second the motion to provide the six thousand, encourage you to support that. I'll call for a note. Is that an oh yes vote?
This question.
Yes.
I mean, I, I would, I think I would support the forty thousand if I knew it was project-oriented, and I know you can't, you don't have any control over that, you have two of your board directors, and, and I don't guess you guys have seen anything as far as the requesting pay raises or anything like that?
No.
Okay, that's all right.
And with the stipulation that if there's not sufficient money to do the six thousand once we have the carryover, then we have to adjust that.
Yes.
So is that be an oh yes vote?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Oh, one other thing, we need to adopt this resolution.
Yes, that's true.
I'll read part of it. It's the West Virginia Certified Development Community CDC Program, whereas the governing body of Indian County is interested in economic development, well-being of its citizenry and community at large, whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community become totally prepared on the development. And whereas the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, the West Virginia Economic Development Council, and the West Virginia Development Office are offering a program that is specially designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Basically, it's resolving that we are partners in that and we support this effort. Have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion second. Oh yes, adopt this resolution, and we have to sign that.
Larry, you want to take this to my office and make a copy? And then give me a copy?
Sure.
Leave the copy as well as you.
Absolutely.
Next thing on the agenda is Bryant Bunman.
Welcome, Brian.
Morning, sir. Can I take a moment, just thirty seconds, about your forensics program? Mrs. Nelson said there's a possibility that a program might not exist next year. My sons, one of them was a state debate champion, and that program has meant so much over the years to both those boys. Somehow the elected officials and the Board of Education and the business people got to ensure that program. It's a real bright spot.
Yeah, I know. At Duval, it was a cornerstone, that whole educational program.
Absolutely. And there was, I don't think there's ever been a situation in the workplace where those boys felt uncomfortable addressing a group or, I mean, it was just, it's an important program. I want to discuss the culvert, I think y'all have a nickname or something for it, above my house, and a brief history. In the thirties, when Midway Road was built, there was a box culvert that crossed under the road there at almost a ninety-degree angle, and it handled Fuquay Creek with no problem until a few years ago when there was an attempt to put a, an extension on the culvert, and it came off at a, at a bad angle. And it is a metal extension, and to do that properly, there should have been built to connect. That wasn't done. The field probably was about 2,000 cubic yards, and I gave the county that material off the farm to be a good neighbor to Rex, which now most of that material is in the creek and is washing away my lawn. What happened subsequently, when the new culvert and the old culvert separated, it created that hole in Rex Burlock's yard. And what would happen is that material would slough off into the culvert, stop the flow of water, and the water would back up then for about 320 yards, some of it about fifteen feet deep, until enough weight and pressure was brought to bear on the plug and it would blow it out, and everything would come down from my house. Then, when the pressure was gone, it would slough off again and the process would repeat itself. A couple of years ago, it seemed like a good idea to dump a couple of tan truckloads of large boulders in that hole, which really stopped the water. And the water had to leach out around the culvert, and it also came across the highway. And now, when it rains hard, most of the water goes down the other side of the highway, which this last time was instrumental in breaking the water down creek, which that process will repeat itself. It will break again and again. One place is already about to break. The state, the State Highway Department sent a survey crew in and surveyed that problem, and I think there were some plans put together for repairs, but nothing's been done. I know I have voiced some selfish reasons for wanting that repair to be made, because it is damaging the property, but my concern more than anything else has been that when you have four to six or eight inches of water across the highway for probably a hundred yards, that someone's going to hydroplane and go in that deep water. And I, I cannot understand why that already hasn't happened. I used to go up and try to get people to slow down, but I don't know why, but now when you try to do that, you're a target. I have learned that. And so I'm asking that the commission be involved or something be done to alleviate that situation.
Well, when I read the request Judy talked about, we'll be here, why? Immediately on the phone and ask somebody in DOH to be here so that there might be some dialogue where we might be able to talk about it, those kind of things, but I'm still already aware that we're, you know, if you're going to be here today and talk about it, then we'll follow it up with a request by letter, ask them to address this and mention the concerns that you have, where we certainly agree that you don't want to make something unsafe, and certainly I know the, I didn't know what, I knew they corrected the, or they filled up that hole. I know that was a concern, but I didn't know what kind of problem it caused, but I did see.
It blocked the water. I mean, when you put two truckloads of, of boulders that size in the culvert, the water stops.
Yeah.
And, and the engineer from FEMA, his first question was, who did this? Now, I think the premier danger is if that section with that much weight on it, when it backs up the highway there, if that section gave way down and you release it to headwater a, an amount of water with a fifteen-foot head on it, it's going to really do some damage downstream.
Be very dangerous.
It, it would. It would go, it would go through my property. The house is not a danger, I'm not saying that at all, but downstream, it would, it would really cause some, some problems.
Well, I'm assuming, and, you know, you never know, but I would think the department wants to get your attention on it and, and they'll have to come up with some engineering plan.
Correct. Now, I think that plan exists because they did extensive surveying, extensive work in there, but I, it just, it went by the wayside then. So there was never, you, are you aware of any money that was appropriated for it at all?
No, and I didn't even know they had a plan. I knew that they filled the hole up, because I kept seeing it whenever I dropped by.
Yes, and it was, it was getting bigger.
Yeah. But we will, we'll think of what we can, but bring it to attention to appropriate people.
Okay.
Send them later. That'd be fun.
Second.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All yes, motion carried. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Chris Wilkerson, is mayor of the town of Hamlin. He's requesting donations for fireworks. He's requesting donations for fireworks. It's time once again for annual Fourth of July celebration. This year, we are planning on having gospel singing on Tuesday, July the third, and the fourth. We will have our traditional parade, entertainment, our kids, these fireworks at the Hamlin lights by field to help cover the costs incurred on July fourth. We need your help. Any financial assistance you can give would be greatly appreciated. As a thank you, we will publish your business name on our celebration brochures. This year, we are asking all donations to be received by May fifteenth in order to have enough time to have the brochures completed and the entertainment fireworks secured. If you have any questions, please call Town Hall at Pier Four, Eight Hundred and One Hundred, if you'd like to help us with our annual Fourth of July summer. You can make a check payment to the town of Hamlin. Thank you in advance for your support.
I know we've always had, how much?
I think we usually give around two thousand.
Okay, is your motion to provide the two thousand dollars that we have in sight?
Over a second.
Motion second. Oh yes, motion carried.
Now, we'll move on to old business, town punchers, Kevin Carroll.
Welcome, Kevin.
And the crew.
I'll introduce everybody. My name's Kevin. This is Melissa, Annie, Linda. We're with the town puncher exercise group, Mother River. Last week, we did a little kickoff for our new exercise equipment, the cat commission. That's good. We had the commissioner there, Tom Lanza there, Thomas is there, Tracy Dempsey's there, Ed Wiltshire's there.
And I'd have to be there.
We was hoping you could have been there.
You haven't, somewhere else I forgot, that one was.
But we wanted to present this bike to the commission on behalf of the town puncher. We presented it there, but Thomas said he wanted to bring that here and present it. This is something we wanted to do for the commission.
We appreciate it. I'm just proud of you guys.
It's kind of pretty crazy.
All set up. I mean, it's, it looks good now.
Well, people using.
The exercise mats down. And we actually got these two to walk them out.
And they didn't even tire out?
They did. But we, we also made them put on a reflective vest before they went there. We all do that.
And I did get to talk with the people down at nine-one-one, the sign people, and they have told me that you cannot get your parking highways to do signs, but they will make some signs that we will get over there, which you all requested before.
And also, where we have some smaller kids that are under fourteen, that, you know, if they're under fourteen, we don't want them getting hurt on the exercise equipment. So Tracy Dempsey, where he sits on the Parks and Recreation Board, he has generously decided to get us a portable basketball hoop for those smaller kids. That way, they'll have something to do. They'll still be getting their exercise.
Yeah. I did hear, somebody mentioned earlier that they did patch a couple of holes that we had requested.
Yes.
They patched the holes.
And since I went up there and walked with you guys, I, I want to tell you that any of you all that are smoking now and need help quit smoking, you let me know, I'll come and talk about it with you.
No, we'll come in.
Because I, I know, I know your family willing to know. It's to my family too. But I mean, I, I think that, you know, you've got the right attitude in what to do to make yourself healthy and stuff. And, and I just, Thomas and I were just talking about a little video, some, you know, real good friends of ours, people we all know smoke. And if you can do anything to help, you want to help, so. And I know you guys kind of got like the way to do things up there, so. But anytime you want me to come up, I'll be willing to talk to a group of whatever and, and help you, help you quit smoking. Because I think that's, the things you're doing for your health right now, if you could just stop the other, you know, you're adding another ten years to your life.
Yeah, that's true.
But I, I did want to tell you guys that. Any of you all, I mean, if you all want me to come up, I'd be glad to do that. And, and in fact, anybody, I said before, you know, that needs help quit smoking, it don't cost, it costs a lot less to quit smoking than it does to continue to smoke. Not only, not only in finance, finances, but in your life and the quality of living you have, so. But Jim, you guys know that. I mean, you guys know how to improve your quality of living, so. But anyway, I'm, I'm very proud of you all. And I think the lady that came down and talked to us was very proud of you all too, so.
I can also say, three months ago, when I was my doctor, my ALC level was eight point one. And when I had a appointment with him Monday, Tuesday, it had come down to seven point two. So, exercise is work.
No doubt.
Do you have an announcement to make in regards to Oprah Winfrey? Not yet.
No, she called Monday, and then she called yesterday, and everything has to be written up. She has to write everything up by tomorrow, and then it goes into Oprah Winfrey's hands herself. Then, next week, we should know. As of right now, we are way ahead, and we are winning, but we're not going to say we're winning because we don't want to jinx it. But if we do get it, they will send a crew in from New York, and they will work with us for two days.
Hang in there, we're all proud of you.
Now, I know, outside of town punchers, I've been talking to Commissioner Ramey about some things to help the county save money. On this one right here, the Lincoln County election officials, that would be a ten-by-ten magnet. The collar, we can work on the collar, and there's an estimate on what it would cost to do that. I think Christie said there would be twenty-one people out that day, so that would be forty-two magnets. I've got an estimate up to that.
And I think the reason that this is important for rovers, just yesterday, I had someone from Ranger tell me that there was a citizen complaining that, and I know Christie's heard this probably, that at the precincts during the last election, we had people coming and going from the precincts, and they did not understand why people were allowed to come in and leave. Those individuals didn't get their lives, those were election rovers, that was their job. So if they had some of those to identify their cars, so that when they were pulling in the precincts, there would be no mistake, they would be identified and killed.
Yeah.
Do we do the photo IDs for the rovers? That might be something too, if we might be able to do here, right? I mean, like we do for ourselves.
For the redistricting, we did.
And this here, we, I'd already gave Thomas a couple of magnets, because he's misplaced them. And, I mean, the collars on those, they're ten into ground. And he said that he would like to have some of those for like the assessors' cars, commission vehicles, any of the county vehicles.
And for that reason, if you travel to neighboring counties, where the county vehicles are around the county most have the emblem on the side, so when they pull up to someone's house, and it's someone from the assessor's office doing a praising, the individuals who live in that house noted that that's someone from the county courthouse, rather than having an unmarked car.
And this next one, I don't, we did it away with the polling place paper signs. You can do a wear of those, or?
We got them for this year.
We have them for this.
Okay. So we just had, you just had a new sign made for the voters here, probably baby. This here would be the three-hundred-foot mark, that turned up our campaign, within that three-hundred-foot mark, where those are paper, made of. They don't stay on them wherever you put them out. And we can actually have these done on the core class sides with the stakes. That way, you just stake them in the ground, make it a lot easier, set them up, take them down. And these here could be used over and over every year.
Christie, are we still looking at preparing our election boxes here instead of buying everything?
This time, we did buy them. The state changed up a lot of paperwork that was in them, and we needed them this time to save all the other stuff, but yeah.
And all that stuff's not useful, is it? I mean, just, I see it laying around all the time.
And when you buy, you buy the whole kit, so they sell it, and all of that's wasted money.
We'll, we'll get into this, we'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Like I said, collars, we can work on that. If we try to get it for the election, that's not a problem, we haven't been able to do that.
Yeah, a couple of mine did. All right, appreciate it.
Okay, with that, our next thing is our e-poll books. You know, we've tried to work on transparency and everything here, and we're cleaning up our elections, and they're telling us that with our purging, if we would have continued with the voter history, that we would have been able to purge several people off the rolls, but have not. So we have taken it upon ourselves here to have the e-poll books instead of the paper poll books. These are the electronic poll books. That will give so much easier for Christie to download and then upload on her computer with the voter history. So she's going to explain to our e-poll books, let everyone see what we're going to use for this election.
And Christie, if you could explain why the e-poll book is important when you have more than one early voting location?
Okay. Which is true, this year, we do have three early voting sites. We've used some sort of like this at the early voting in Hamlin, but now, since we voted in Ferelsburg and McCorkle, this machine, the little computer machine, there's no printing out paper, trying to tear off them little stubs on the side or cut all that out and make the, the person voting go, take it to the person, someone stringing it, we would cut all that out. These link together, and for early voting, all three of the sites will come in through the internet, and we'll link them all together. That way, if you, if someone would go to Hartz and early vote, then they try to drive to Hamlin to early vote, if we didn't have this linked together, they could do that, because there's no security. So this will automatically, if they would come into the Hamlin site and say, I'm here to early vote, and they pull them up, it would just flag them already and say they've done voted at the Hartz site. So we would be able to catch people that way, so no one could, not saying that anyone, you know, you never know, so just to be cautious. Also, normally, anybody who early voted, we had to set and hurry up and get it to, early voting ends on the fifth, on that Saturday. We have to have paperwork ready by that Monday for the election officials to come pick everything up. So we would have to spend the weekend, hurry up processing papers for each precinct, saying, this is who's voted. You know, you can't let this person vote, and they would have to, when someone would come in, they'd have to look at that. Now, this machine will do it all. The gentleman with the company, Richard, is actually going to be here this election. And we'll, they're piloting, piloting this, he will be here the whole time. And there's like a little flash drive in here, and he will pull them out on the fifth, when early voting ends. And the other sites will bring their stuff in. He'll pull all that out, he will upload that, that way, then it will be loaded right in for election day. He would go vote. Your election site would say, whoa, he's done voted.
So you're going to have one of these at each site on the election day?
Yeah, yeah. Every precinct will have these now. We don't have to worry about making all those big poll books and then trying to find it and turn it around and let people sign it. It's right here. I know this is a little bit nervous for people. When you say computer, some of your people are like, you know, scared of that. These are, these are really nice, they're wonderful. You just would go in there, and I would say, what's the last three letters of your name? You would tell me the three, I would just punch that, and then bam, it'd bring you right up. From that, they would click that you're getting ready to vote on that little computer. You would then, just like you do at a store, it's like, if you have to sign for your credit card, you would sign your name, and then it would print it out right here. Print all your information right there. We're going to use this paper as a backup. But what will happen is, all of the little flash cards out of these will be pulled out after the election. They'll download them in the computer, so there's no more setting and scanning. Before, in your had a poll book, you had to scan every single person who voted, you had to scan their barcode, which took days. Now, they'll just load all that into the computer and bam, it'll automatically go to the state who voted. So you don't have to set and scan, you don't have to do none of that stuff. And these papers here will be a backup, just in case something would happen, we'd have this whole printout. The state was here on Monday. We had, started our election official training, the first one on Monday. What they're going to do is, there will be cards that they'll be given, red, blue, and white, representing each party. And when someone would come to register, and it will tell me what party they are, that's the colored card they'll be given. They'll take that card over to the commissioner that will load the PEB for them. So there's no, you know, yelling out what party they are. They talked about taking these and ripping them off and give it to them, but these want to crinkle, and so I told them these need to stay on here, so the state says that you're allowed to give the card. They would take the card. When they could see that color, they would know what, what ballot to bring out for you. So, any questions?
Okay, say, in your early voting sites, you leave those sites at the end of the day, what happens with this?
This would just, this would just stay there.
Stay there, so.
There's nothing on this except for?
But you take the, you take the card out or anything like that?
No, there's no.
So, so it's going to send the results all ready to a centralized location?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, of who voted.
It's all hooked up to the internet, right?
Right, and I, I think he said, it's either every five, five to ten minutes, every five to ten minutes, it'll update every five.
Now, that tells you who voted, but what about the results of the vote itself?
No, that's still stored in those Ivo Tronics, like they've always been.
In the machines, like you always, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Those will be like, this will just have names.
So we'll still be having to provide security in each place with the machine being there overnight, things like that?
Right, yeah.
Because I mean, I know somebody has mentioned before about a laptop and things like that, and, and, you know, being able to take things, you know, not have to worry about security as much and things like that, you know, so.
And you've got it always, like locks and things, to make sure we locked up these places and these.
Yeah, and all the internet's been, I think all of it's running. I know they came to Hamlin yesterday, over here.
There will be cameras on the doors, as well as like, there'll be two new locks on each door. The Democrat will have a key to one lock, the Republican will have a key to one lock, with the cameras showing, and then the security.
Is, is, are these units password protected for the staff? Because, like, if early voting closes next Wednesday, or, you know, the first day of early voting closes next Wednesday evening, could, could someone access that and go in and vote a dozen Hamlin voters without them ever knowing that they early voted?
You mean this?
Yeah.
Now, this doesn't do anything, except for?
No, I know it doesn't vote, but I'm saying, could someone go in and, and access it where it would show that people voted, who actually hadn't voted?
They would have to sign their signature and everything.
Okay.
Same thing as if they had a book. I mean, you know, they would have to sign their name.
Okay.
Yeah, they would have to find a person, punch it, come over here, turn it on. And then, it's also going to have times, so you're going to know immediately that next morning, if you come in, there's any of?
After hours, okay.
Yeah, you'd immediately know. And at the end of the day, this computer will read how many votes was voted that day, which will be better for us, because people always call in, how many did you have today? So they'll be able to call, and every evening, they will look at that total number, and then they'll check both of their machines and make sure those two numbers match that number.
And then there'll be paperwork for them to do.
That they would sign off on every day, saying, hey, there was only a hundred votes today. This will match theirs.
What about the people who will be operating this? Are they afraid of it, or are they willing to do it, or what do we have on that, do we know?
I think they might be a little afraid, but, once they do it, that's all, like we told them in the class on Monday night, everybody always wants to be a ballot commissioner. You just load the PEB and walk away, or you string it. No one ever wanted to do the books, because you had to take forever. Now, everyone will be fighting for this job, because it's going to be wonderful. I mean, it's going to be easy.
We didn't have any negative comments Monday night from the, you're needed.
No. Plus, the guy, the guy's coming to all of our trainings, and he's the one doing the training for them. Now, the early voters, early voter workers, I, I will bring them in before Wednesday, and we'll actually sit down. Now, the first day, there'll be, I'll be here in Hamlin, Kim will be at Hartz, and maybe Kyra at McCorkle, however that works, for the first day, helping them get going. But also, we'll be in and out that whole time, just checking on them, you know, swing by, you know, Kim may leave early one day, just swing up there, check on them, different things like that. Plus, the state will be here.
It will be here for early voting.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because we are the, we're the first pile at county, well, there's several other counties, but where we had these before, they're letting us go first, so they'll be here. They're, they're even programming the state workers too, so they're going to be there to help. help.
Uh, when people do vote and it goes electronically, does those names also go to the Secretary of State's office?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It'll just be brought right into the system. Normally, they would, the state would have to have to wait...
Right.
Till after the election, after canvas, when I can get the books out and set and scan them now, it'll just be uploaded right in there.
And will the people that do early voting, will they, like, maybe like the first day, keep a manual list of the voters? So you would have access to, you know how when you work the election, you give us a list of early voters?
Right.
I mean, are you gonna do that?
There won't be a list, because, okay, let's say, like what you're talking about, let's say you were working at Hartz.
Yes.
On election day, that's gonna be in this computer for you. So if you would type in Christie Strags, it'd pop up and say, "Christie's done already voted at Hartz," so you wouldn't even let me vote again. You don't have to have to look.
But I don't have to keep a manual list with the actual voter list?
No, it'll all be, that'll store everything in there. And we do have blocks on these, we're not letting it do everything it could do, because I don't want everybody being able to change anything in my system, you know, through the state. So there is like blocks on them.
I heard you mention it before, Kim.
On these, when they're at the precincts, does the precincts have to have the high-speed internet to be able to move in?
No, because on election day, you're only gonna allow the people at, that's registered in your precinct vote anyways, if not, they do the provisional. So, there would be no need for them to link that day, because only the people in your precinct can vote.
And how does your base link it the day of the election?
No, just the early voting.
Okay.
'Cause the early voting, any precinct can just walk in and vote, so those have to link. But election day, you're gonna pull that person up and if it says Christie Strags, that I've not voted, I'm in your precinct, then bam, I get to vote. But it might say Christie Strags, already early voted, then you would say, "We see you already early voted." You know, and if I say to you, "Well, I don't care, I wanna change my vote," of course, you can't say, "No, you can't vote."
Right.
You move over to the provisional papers, like you always, you know, always done your provisional papers.
Christie, if they come in there and are not in the right precinct, will that show the precinct they're supposed to be in? So you could actually tell them you're in line?
If you don't hit that, looks like a little scanner from Walmart, if you don't hit that person just right, as you're moving down through there, you could miss that person that showed, "Hey, that person didn't vote." You could miss that, anything like that. So this right here would automatically do it all.
That'll...
No error for, for us, you know, accidentally. Or if you scan that, if that book's been wrinkled or anything like that, it might not pick that up and you miss that person.
Christie.
The piece of paper that we're looking at, each time a voter votes, that shows up, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, this prints out.
At the end of the day, when a hundred people assuming have voted, what do you do?
This is gonna be done the same way as the back of the machines will. Once this goes out, we showed them how to load the paper, too, the workers, we had the training.
Correct.
Once this goes out, they can tape it up, they'll drop it down in our main box, in their big ballot box.
At the end of the day?
Well...
Early voting.
Yeah.
And surely you wouldn't have, you know, one thing all in the floor and all this thing and other, at the end of the day?
Oh, no, and when this rolls, it just rolls straight right back here and it sits right there. And so, at the end of the day, you can just barely rip it off. Now, election day, this is probably gonna have to be changed...
Good enough.
Several times.
But it does have a day, not a time.
Oh, yeah. It'll print out, uh, it'll print what we want it to, you know, whatever we want it to print, but it will definitely, like, right, this is an example, he had election day, it'll have that, poll name, like this one says EV location, that's how we had set this sample up. The polling address is on there, then the voter's ID, the voter's name, the voter's address, um, the ballot party name, what party they are, and it could have anything, we can have whatever we would want on there. Now, we do, this one don't have it, but we have requested, even the signature gets brought up on there, too, and that's how we've had it in the past here. So when they sign this, everything from there will just print right out and it'll have a signature from each person.
So at the end of the day, that paper's ripped off, like, say, the first day of early voting, when you're buttoned in, the polls close, they will tear that paper off and put it in a specific envelope and put it in the box, a lot box?
Yeah, yeah, their box that they'll have, the early voting box. Now, they may have, depending on how many people come out for early voting, this may have to be changed.
Sure.
As soon as it runs out, they drop it in a box and we'll have extra paper from there to load it right back up, keep it going. So we'll have all that as a backup, 'cause you never know, if something would happen with this flash card, then that'll be our second backup. And if, if need be, it would still, this will still print the barcode, so if something would happen, then I still have this to go back to, to set and scan if I have to.
That'll also help, where, say, like precinct seventeen, eighteen, is in the same building, we have two separate books, instead of having two books, we'll have the long computer.
Yep.
And on the provisional, there's a place on the poll book that instead of a regular ballot, you would issue a provisional. And on the premed, it's gonna tell all the provisional and everything, and that will give the canvassers, which is the commissioners here, where they canvass and they can look through the roll, that's identification to the provisional ballot.
'Cause you guys know in the past, it might say, "Hey, there's a provisional," then you all look and you can't find anything on the provisional. Well, this will also flag, hey, there's a provisional, this is what a provisional was. And also, they can also flag this where, if we would need identification for someone, their driver's license number. Uh, when people mail in their cards, a lot of times they don't make a copy of their ID, and this will flag them saying, "Hey, they don't have your ID." Well, they have to show that ID if they can vote. Well, when it goes in there and it's flagged and the worker clicks, you know, this is the voter, and it says, "Enter ID," and say they'd enter the ID, then when that main flash card comes down and loads into my computer, it'll say, "You had fifteen flags," so I can go to those people and see, "Hey, why was they flagged? Could it be an, an address change? Was it, so they didn't have an ID and then I could pick up on those people?" Instead of looking through a book, trying to see if there was any notes in it or anything like that.
So this kinda eliminates the problems we've had with provisional before, where they weren't complete. This will get us more complete, 'cause a lot of them, we couldn't even accept them even if we wanted, 'cause they hadn't, had enough information on there for us to do that stuff.
Right. And one, another thing, too, speaking of when you all canvass, the, with the internet ran over there now, I have came across a lot of the problems with that is, usually you're the one who looks in the book, A through Z, the papers. You go through there and you look for my name's Strags and you're like, "Hey, I don't see her." Then my name could have been misspelled. But one thing about the internet now, now, we can put the computer there and then when you all canvass, you just type in the name, bam, it come up, and if you can't find it that way, you type in the birthday and it would show that person, then you'd say, "Ay, I see their name was misspelled in the computer, that's why..." 'Cause I think some people might have, if you all looked and said, "Hey, they're not here," it really could have been voters just accidentally in or wronged or...
If you remember, even their names could be spelled right, but there was an extra space.
Yeah. We have found a lot of juniors. They would, for some reason, whoever entered them in the past, they put junior as the middle name, and then we're looking for a junior on the end and we can't find that person, you know? Or they'll add junior with their first name, but when you enter their first name, you can't find them, so...
And if you come across somebody that has the same like name, like there's two Christie Strags, is the poll worker supposed to ask for a birth date?
Yeah, yeah. The poll workers are actually, when I come up, they, they were to ask me, you know, my name, whatever, and they can enter, then they're supposed to say, "What's your address?" I don't think that's been happening at a lot of places, because I still get people's addresses, says Zenead Street name, which has been on there probably for years.
Yes.
So that's what we've been telling them in the training, they have to say... I mean, I know you know, like a lot of people in your precincts, you might just say, "Hey, this is them," but we're not getting this updated stuff that we need.
Well, no, I worked the election and every time we'd find that, we would ask for the address and we'd put it in. But then 911 came, changed everybody's addresses two or three times, so...
I think the best thing is when they say, "Uh, you can give your address and date of birth."
Right.
Because there's a date of birth that's wrong in there, too. It might be all five years...
Yes, that's right.
Or flipped backwards.
That's right.
So Christie, if somebody comes in and the, the, the address is not in the system, can the poll worker put the address in the system?
For them to be able to do that, they would have to be able to get into our main SVRS and W.
So when that happens, what does the poll worker do?
Uh, it will print out right here and they will put their address right there on that paper, so we'll have a backup. And it, he might be able to work it out where they can enter it and it'd be, it'll be one of those flagged ones, like, they won't actually be allowed to be the one to change it in the main system, but it'll flag for me to see it and I can change it.
Just be addressed?
Yeah, because if we let poll workers change that, I would have to give every one of them, a deputy clerk, under our main thing, give them passwords, give them, you know, and that's just too dangerous, because you can change anything in there, you know, so I don't want that possibility, 'cause we'll be responsible.
So back, back to the paper thing you just said, so does the person who votes, if their address says Zenead Street, and you said the paper, on the paper it can be changed, does the poll worker write the new address or just the person who's actually voting write their own address on that paper?
It'd probably be quicker to let them...
That's what I would like.
Do that. You can do it either way, you know?
Then you have handwriting issues, though. Then you might have handwriting issues, whenever poll workers get good handwriting versions.
True.
So how many currently, how many voters did you have before and what is the current total count of voters? It's, you know...
Put me on the spot, Lisa.
I'm sorry.
Um, we still, as far as, um, what are you talking about? Workers.
No, how many, I mean, I said poll workers, I mean, registered voters. We went from twenty-one thousand and seven hundred and some, was that correct?
Something like that. It is still up there, because you have active and inactive, so it's still nineteen thousand and some. But if you look at just active, twelve, thirteen thousand, I think. Yeah. But now, voters, you, you know, they have to sit there.
Oh, I know, I know. I just wondered, I mean, I know you've done a great job parting the books, I just want to commend you. So that's what I was just, you know, I knew we went from thousands down to, you know, several thousand, that's great.
Yeah. It's just something that's gonna take a while, you know? The state's been working with us now, going through, making sure we have cards, you know, everything like that. Like, me and, actually the guy Kurt from the state, we tell everybody, Lincoln County will be the best-looking county, best-looking county in the whole entire state. I know. So with their help and us and what we're doing, the time we finish it all and everything, it, actually we'll be going and training other counties, I'm sure of.
Can I ask what happens, the, the Ivotronic machines keep a paper trail, correct?
Yes.
What happens to that roll of paper after the un-election night? Because I imagine you could take the roll of paper from precinct four, this machine, and compare it to the printout from that, and you would have an exact record of how everyone voted and who voted what way, if you held them next to each other, would you not?
Voting's not on this.
No, I know it's not on that, but, but you have a record of the time and date the person came in to vote, and you have that on the paper trail.
That's really what we do with canvassing, we have that, the printout of the paperwork the officials actually put at the end of the day.
Okay.
And then we have that printout, and what we do is we go through, we count how many votes for this person compared to how many they listed.
Gotcha.
But I see what you're saying.
But if you, if you had that roll next to this roll, and compare...
It's locked up in a secured area for thirty days.
Okay.
And then it's in, it's stored for twenty-two months...
Okay.
In secured areas.
And then you get permission and then it's destroyed, it has to be shredded.
Okay.
But I see what you're saying, but...
Not that I'm saying anything would happen.
I know. Well, we gotta think of everything, but probably, let's use Hamlin, there's gonna be a lot of you in line. So if I'm the poll clerk and I'm punching in, you're probably gonna be moved to the side, moved to the side. So the time you get to vote, it might be a little bit harder to...
Tally them all?
Right, to try to, yeah.
Plus, you have more than one machine and you don't know which one they voted on, you're gonna have...
There'll be two machines.
Gotcha, okay.
Our plans are, there's gonna be, for what we're calling our big precincts, Hamlin, Ranger, Hartz, Duval, Midway, those machines. It'll be set up sort of like this, two tables, there'll be a computer on one and a computer on the other, Democrat, Republican, Democrat, Republican, poll clerks, so we get to have four now. And that one will be labeled A through L, M through Z, depending on what your last name is, we're hoping that'll push through. But like I told them the other night, if M through Z is backed up and A through L doesn't have it backed up...
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, they can move over there, that's just trying to help it flow, 'cause they're both gonna have everything on it.
Right. Uh, what's gonna happen with the actual machines at the facility after the non-relection? Are they gonna be brought back here to the courthouse? What's gonna happen?
The small precincts will, um, the ones that gets your two, three machines, they'll bring them back like they normally do. The precincts, the big precincts, they'll be, everything, the same seal, everything, and then they'll be put back, locked back up, and then the Democrat, Republican will go the next, the next day ride and pick all them back up, see the...
Will that be the two poll workers that pick them back up?
No. No.
They'll tell you why, aren't they?
Yeah.
Hopefully ballot commissioners.
Well, I mean, the, the two people who worked that election, a Democrat, I mean, that's, I mean, who, how, who's gonna pick, who goes and gets those machines the next day?
Ballot commissioners.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's say right now we have Anita Logan and Louise Nelson.
Yes.
For an example. They would be the two that will drive the day before in the big truck, ride in the big truck, and take drop off.
And then those will be the two that picks them up?
The next day. Picks them up.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have the driver.
Tammy's your ballot commissioner, isn't she?
Oh, Tammy Robinson, sorry.
Yeah, Tammy and Anita. With assist, you know, not, we're not saying that you're gonna lift all the machines, but they will be there to assist to make sure of security.
They're gonna make sure...
We'll have other people that will actually unload this of the...
Because we're gonna have to rent a rider machi, uh, truck to put all the machines in there, the day before and the day after.
That way they can be there and watch.
So are all the machines gonna be delivered to the sixteen precincts or some being collected by workers?
Just the bigger ones.
Just the bigger ones, okay.
Has six machines.
Okay.
So that's Hamlin, Ranger, Duval, Midway. The four Hearts in there.
Midway, McCorville, Duval, checking on our precincts.
He can not.
Yeah. Hearts, Ranger, Guy Valley, West Hamlin, Hamlin. And like, let's use West Hamlin for example, West Hamlin has two precincts in there. So instead of someone in sixteen driving over here just to get the two machines, it could just go on that rider truck too, since they're, same thing with Duval.
But they will still have to kind of get their supply.
Yeah, they still have to kind of pick up.
The supply commissioner has to come get the.
Yeah, just like normal. They just won't have to try to find a vehicle and load all the machines, yeah.
So the supply commissioner won't be picking the computers out?
No, that was another thing too. The computers are actually in this box. We're gonna get boxes for the printer and the signature pad to put them in. And we want our rovers to take those, take these, because these are so expensive. I know how some of the machines look. So we want them to be responsible for this. And they would actually take them there, set them up for everybody, cause we'll have to do a really good training with them. They'll set them up, and then at the end of the night, they'll put them back in there and then they'll bring them back to us.
So the rovers will be present at the end of early voting, or I mean, at the end of election day to pick those.
Yeah, we have it now where there is a rover at every precinct.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and they'll do that precinct. We don't have to split no more this time, especially this time, we want one rover in there to handle anything. Cause like in Hearts, Kim would have to leave to try to get over here, I would have to leave, you know, try to get here, start, you know, so now we have other vehicles. And you're gonna have Kim being like the main runner, big ugly Hearts and Ranger. And then I'll be probably everywhere else, Guy Valley coming this way. And then we'll check in on our rovers and things. And we've told our rovers what they're there for. You know, they're not there for anything, they're not there to help, you know, registering, but they're there to, there's an issue on the machine and, yeah, things like that.
I have a few questions to your point.
Yes.
Now, when they sign, does that signature compare to the computer? Or does it compare, or does a poll worker look at it, or how?
Yes, whenever, whenever this would come up and say my name was entered, it's gonna pop up and it will have my signature. So when it's signed there, that signature falls right below that one, and they can compare. Now, you know how a signature on these look when you sign it at the store.
Yes.
So that's gonna be, they're just gonna have to try to judge that. They always say to follow that first letter. Usually everybody does that first letter the same way, to follow that letter.
Are there any backup machines at all? I mean, does it say this printer jams and breaks or goes down?
At a precinct, yeah, there'll be double printers, double printers, double signature and double computers. So if this one would tear up, then while we're figuring this out and getting the man to whatever precinct, they can keep going, yeah.
Are they battery powered?
Small precincts.
Every precinct has two.
Yeah.
Are they battery powered or electric?
Electric, but they do have a battery backup too, just in case something would happen. So, and then these can be entered with their finger, or they also have the little, yeah, the little styluses that they can work things with too, just like the, I can't even think today, it's been a long time. The Ivotronics, thank you guys.
Do we own these or who owns them? Does the county own them?
Yeah, I believe they just purchased.
Do we need screen protectors on them to get all wired up for all order?
They haven't mentioned that, have they?
Do you use a stylus or you dirty grease your fingers? I mean, that's what.
We're telling them to use.
I know having a tablet and greasy fingers every day that.
Oh, yeah.
You may wanna have a screen protector of some sort on there that, just a plastic sheet.
I asked him today about the screen protectors. He'll be here, we have another training tonight, he's coming and doing, he does all that.
I think you got big fingers, like you should be getting two at a time.
Yeah, we call them fat fingers, I do it all the time.
I encourage the stylus shoes, but still.
And even on the Ivotronics, we try to get them to use those stylus.
A lot of them won't do.
I know, because, you know, those look awful, you gotta keep using the alcohol pads.
Yes.
So. Any other question?
Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, done a good job, Kristin. Appreciate it from our clerk here.
All right, thank you.
Did you all have to buy any new machines for the new Corville and Hearts?
Uh, those, no. And actually, I think I added the other day, I have four spares left. And we have a couple that's broke, that they're gonna have to come and fix, like either the printer, the back papers jammed or whatever, and they're fixing them. And then we wanna spend the summer really looking at those, and any screws that's gone or anything, and then take our better looking ones and start using them.
Some of those voting machines are pretty big.
You might see how much it costs if they have to buy the works, not on.
Oh, yours is off?
Yeah, anyway, it's like over here, a lady came and she failed, hit her arm on the machine and broke the whole door off, so that happens. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
Next thing on the agenda is Ricky Dow and Ryan Jefferson from the AR Pretty Vision Project.
Welcome, Rick and Ryan.
They're trying to be quick. Yes.
And we don't run late, huh?
Yeah. It's a busy day today.
Are you hearing the room right now?
Yep.
Now what happens?
Okay, we wanna give you a quick update about what's happening with the Ways Porter Project. Am I gonna be so short they won't even do a front? Know what they missed. Your first page just gives you an update on all the different kinds of things we've been doing. Ryan's gonna talk about most of that. I wanna jump to the second page. Second page is the final financial requisition for Phase Three. That's the phase that we're currently in, we started last April. And if you'll look at it, the original approved budget was seven-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. The last time we did a drawdown, we had spent seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, and so we're asking for the final amount, which is five-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. So we are sending that in today, so this will close out from the state's viewpoint that phase, that's from the financial standpoint. We still have, of course, we've got that thirty thousand dollars that's, the commission loaned us for Phase Three, who are continuing to use what the state's encouraging us to do. We've still got bills, really Phase Three bills that haven't come in, for example, bills for sampling, maybe those kinds of things. We're gonna pay that using the thirty thousand dollars that we've got. When we start Phase Four, we'll reimburse that thirty thousand dollars with Phase Four.
So we need to approve this request in fifty-three?
The president already signed it earlier.
Need to go down or anything?
No, I just, this is just for your information. The thing probably that would be, I think probably we are, if the commissioners wanted to do this, would be to empower the president to act in the commission's stead. If we need to have things signed between now and the next time you meet, since there's a whole month coming in five.
Motion second, and all yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, and I'm gonna turn things over to Ryan here, who can answer any question you've got about stuff.
I'll be on best.
We've got, we're doing a cleanup with the non-viable offenders at noon, they can't play. So I wanna make sure that everybody gets in the right thing, has their light jacket on before they get in the ward. Where's Camp Lake? The left side of the mud rivers, the camp, the residence camp that the commission's trying to build. From the left side, the left ward side.
Trying to get a better road than that did.
Yeah, we sent in a request, hopefully.
Just got us some updates of what we've been into recently, and the biggest takeaway from this is we got our specs approved, so that was great. We talked to the DEB and we finally got it all approved and everything. We've moved forward with our bidding, our bid procedure. We had two pre-bid meetings, and then a kind of informative, non-required pre-bid meeting. That, let's see, we can just kind of follow some of these dates. I did a round of tributary sampling, you know, April twelfth, we had the informational meeting for the Phase Four bidders, and Friday and Monday, the required ones, if anybody was interested in bidding, they had to come to those. And we visited, we'll turn to your Phase Four site business page. We visited nineteen homes on that Friday, so that was the busiest day, obviously. And well, basically, kind of idea of what happens is these contractors went out with us to each home's home site, and based on measurements from wells nearby, gas lines, things like that, they would draw out designs of how they wanted to, you know, thought they would put this system in, and then they'll give us that price based on what they think. So then we saw all the direct discharge systems, all the UV lights, and then the new pump tanks on Friday. Then on Monday, we did six homes, and those were the in-ground systems. We kind of felt like the in-ground were more complicated than the direct discharge, so we wanted to spend a whole day doing that. And then a little bit of this French drain and then moving the system on Friday also, or Monday, sorry. So, so that was good. So we got the pre-bid meetings done, and hopefully we should, we should be opening the bids on May fourth. So we got some more sampling to do, and then we'll be doing the bids on May fourth, a couple of community meetings in between. Yeah, we're hoping to have this Phase Three closed, kind of what Rick was talking about. We'd like to just cancel out the rest of that money, be done with that. And then June seventh, we're guesstimating, we think we might probably get funding from the DEB by around June seventh. Something else I'd like to bring your attention to, that's really good. If you look at our post-installation tributary sampling, Ecolite Analysis page, this last one here on the left, April third, I did these samples and they came back really, really good. Just to kind of look, I mean, this is kind of like a breakdown of over this, you know, two, two-year period, two to three-year period. You know, you can see how these levels have decreased over time, especially on this left fork in Bolger Road. I mean, you know, and Dogbone, Dogbone has shown really good promise on the base, the last, the last round of samples. So, you know, we had only four-fifty on the left fork in Bolger Road, and then only two-thirty Ecolite on Dogbone. So, I mean, you can see it used to be fifty thousand, two-hundred thousand, five thousand, five hundred, three thousand, five hundred, you know, so we're really, we're really satisfied with this last set of sampling. So that's, that's good news. So it just, it just goes to show that our project actually is doing what we wanted it to do. We're cleaning up these streams and stuff, so.
That looks good, I'm getting more funding, I'm sure.
That's right, that's right. If you guys have any questions for me or anything, or?
Appreciate it.
Thank you much.
Thanks. Keep Rick straight.
I'll try to.
Next thing on the agenda is the Hearts Community Center.
I was there yesterday, and the internet is in place for early voting. I respect sometimes that people in the county take for granted the auxiliary deputies. Most people think that they're paid, and I know each day we have Government Day at Hearts, we have an auxiliary deputy there, stays the entire day, and just really appreciate the volunteerism on their behalf. And I look forward to the day that we have the Corville Government Day open.
Next thing on the agenda is the Corville Community Center, Lawrence, you have one to report?
On the outreach part, Sharon said everything's going well, she has a lead for Dr. Quin. We had our monthly meeting held on April sixth, six P M. We had gospel singing, hot dog sale, it was held on April fourteenth. We also have a quilt, we wrap it off during the May fourth meeting at the center, six P M. And the Take Back Garage Day is for April twenty-eighth. The fencing was installed for the street. The floors are being done actually today and tomorrow. And we received a banner from the Pepsi Cola to advertise what we have going on. And also, the internet was installed for early and voting and later for the Government Day. And we received a fifty-dollar gift card from, donation from Walmart that was used by a bulletin board, which stands for the wheel and parastreak. And Rick Saul announced that Parkland Recreation is working to install a basketball hoop in the cafeteria. And we discussed having picnic tables and grills installed for cookouts and picnics. And there's a meeting scheduled for April twenty-fourth at six P M to inform the citizens of Hazardous Emergency Grant Program for FEMA, that's a lay-out program, it's at six o'clock. And for the hearings planning we had, it was assessed, one more attended. That's all we have, thank you.
And Rick's also, last week, he's getting a little grant to help get some water drains off of the front area where they're gonna have parking. He's gonna be able to do R C and D, get some money to help do that, so at least he get that done.
Okay, the health initiative, we were supposed to weigh in tomorrow, we're gonna not have a weigh-in until the twenty-seventh, which will be next Friday. We also, I would like to let the commission know that there are six people that have quit smoking. And I know the commission has promised that if they would continue to quit smoking for at least six months, that they would reimburse them for their product that they have used. And three of them have chosen just to quit right out, so the commission wouldn't have to, but we have two other employees are using the, some kind of deal.
Enchantix?
Yes, thank you. So, and one was a success with Enchantix, and one is using the patches. Okay, on to new business, I need a motion to approve that we also submitted for Hamlin.
Motion in second, and all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointment to us and settle, it's submitted by Merle Duke Clerk.
Second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to reappoint the calling members to the Lincoln County Farm Law Protection Board. Charles McCann, President of the Commission, Clinton Lucas, Farmer and Soil Conservation District Member, Jay Lauren Smith as a farmer, and James W. Stevens as a public member.
If anybody wants my slot, I'll be glad to let one of you guys have it. Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointment studying vacation, the Lincoln County Commission, by Merle Duke Clerk.
Second. Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept the letter of notice of retirement for Joanne Reyes, Deputy Tax Assessor, effective March the thirty-first, two thousand and twelve.
So moved, second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Linda Atkins as Home Incarceration Officer, effective April fifteenth, two thousand and twelve.
Second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to set a hearing date of May the seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, at ten A M on the contest and will of Jack and Amy Cooper due to the illness of Jack Cooper.
So moved, second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve to appoint Linda Whitman as Judiciary Commissioner for the State of Annalee Atkins due to the request from the heirs to remove Robert W. Gibson, Jr. as administrator.
Second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint C. Joseph Stevens as Judiciary Commissioner for the State of Vivian Hensley due to the request from Denny Hensley to remove the administrators.
So moved, second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a drawdown request number one in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Garrett's Peak Community Center for the Community Participation Grant Program and the Certification of Completion to give Charles S. McCann President Authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved, second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an inner office budget revision for the Office of the County Clerk for overtime as follows. Transfer seven hundred dollars from insurance, six hundred dollars from telephone, one thousand from record books to one thousand, seven hundred, ninety dollars to salary and wages, one hundred seventy-six to FICA, three hundred thirty-four to retirement, it's submitted by Merle Duke Clerk.
Second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to adopt the investment policy set forth for West Virginia Code seven dash three dash fifteen A.
So moved, second. Motion in second, what is it, why are we doing?
Because the auditor told us to, anytime we invest money in the state. Hold on one second. Anytime we invest money through the state or through any bank, we have to have an investment policy approved by the commission to give the share authorization to invest that money.
And all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint David Vickers Sheriff as Administrator from the State of the Lowell Ferguson.
Second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a drawdown request number one in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Hamlin Women's Club from the Community Participation Grant Program and the Certification of Completion to give Charles S. McCann President Authorization to sign those stated documents.
So moved, second. Motion in second, and all yes, motion carries.
Enough of the playground?
Playground up there, yes. Is there anyone in the audience that wasn't on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
The floor is yours.
I'm Erin Pinzel, and the hat that I'm wearing today is the Big Ugly Crime Watch President. And so I have two of my Big Ugly Crime Watch folks with me, Henry Mills, who you've met already, and Bonnie Vanadder. I wanted to thank you guys for the contribution at the last meeting, and I wanted to give you guys the update. We've had three official meetings so far, one per month, and we have sixteen members right now, and a lot of folks who are interested. So we're moving forward with that, and just wanted to let you guys know, stuff is happening at Big Ugly. And this is one of those things that came out of the chat and shoes, which I talked about months ago. This is something that community members identified that they needed and are coming together and creating with the help of Rick Saul and the Slinton County Crime Watch, so we just wanted to thank you guys.
And you got sixteen members, the fun is to get started, or sign and things like that, are you doing all right with that?
We're starting, we're figuring it out. We're beginning fundraising, and so this is a nice little seed money for us.
I remember, we did help the others, so you might keep that in mind if you.
Well, you did help us in the last round, but we'll come back to you. I mean, if you would like to give us money right now, you know, we'll take it.
I just want you to know that it excites us to know we got the crime watch organizations out there. But we know, we believe it makes each community better, and we just don't want you to get discouraged thinking, well, it's not going.
Well. So far, things are great, yeah, it is moving forward really fast.
You know, it's so important, you guys live out like you do, that you help yourselves like you are. I mean, because, you know, you just don't ever have enough law enforcement to take care of things the way they are. And when you live out in the hodos like you all do and I do, you know, it's really all of us helping each other. And I think that's the basis of why the crime watch does as well.
But it would be a welcome sight for any one of you that would wanna show a little bit of one of our meetings, think about that.
Very funny. Very funny.
There are meetings at the Big Ugly School over there.
Yeah, the Big Ugly Community Center, third Monday of every month at 7:00. And we're also having our next chat and chew next Friday, so it's the 27th at 6:00. And we're gonna be welcoming some wonderful community organizers.
Grisham, is that one?
Yeah, the Grishams, Vaughn and Sandy Grisham.
She's up there on.
Yeah. And any of you are welcome to join for Vaughn and Sandy's presentation or for the chat and chew itself.
Grisham's great.
They're fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Merle?
I would. The chat and chew meetings that we have, we just get our neighbors together and say, what would you like to see happen in this community to help us to, for it to be better? And for a long time, picking up trash has been one of my pet peeves because people have no respect for cemeteries or whatever. And thanks to people that come in from other states through the community center, we had Saturday, how many people?
I think we had 21 people.
21 people from other places to pick up some of this trash and it's a dream come true. And it's like, what I'm trying to say is, if you have something like the community center, get involved and dream and get your blood to circulating again because it really can make a difference. I'd just like to say thank you for the people who did come in and people who's responsible to tell them, we have this problem and we have, we got help.
We have been trying to, it's good to hear that. We've been trying to commission, come up with enough money to do the large thing cleanup. I don't think you ever got...
Oh, I wish, I wish.
Do you remember what you were talking about? In the areas where the schools have been closed, Big Ugly, Mud River, the, the community loses the sense of place. And you go from being a community to being people that happen to live along the same road. And the chat and chew and things that's one of the Mud River fire department, that brings people back together. So again, you regain that focal point of community. So I think it's great.
I think.
And the recycling that used to be over in Furlsbury, those containers were removed maybe a year ago. Was there a lot of problem with too much garbage in them or the wrong things or what was with that?
The funding, that where they would come and take care of it was discontinued and there is no funding for that anymore.
That was a statewide issue they had, couldn't, you know, there wasn't a lot of use, but...
Well, I, I just thought it was their waste management unit. I, I didn't know.
No, it was, they were the people that were being paid to do it through the state. Each county was getting so much money for that, but none available at this point.
Or is the major, like the 36-yard dumpsters, are they gonna show up again over at Furlsbury grade school?
Well, we're not, we're not sure yet. We're trying to, it's like a $20,000 price tag, do that across the county. And we're trying to, we've been approached to consider that, but we haven't come up with the funding yet to do that. But that's about what it takes to, I think, in $20,000 to make it happen. We have discussed that with the solid waste people, trying to figure out if they can get any money to help us pay for that. Everybody wants it, it's just...
We need to recycle big time.
Well, that's no doubt. No doubt.
Mr. President, fellow commissioners, and fellow citizens. We've begun a project here, but we, I don't feel that we have gone far enough yet. The people's records and things are all kept back there. Not mine, it don't belong to me, but I am there right now, in the county clerk's office. And I believe there needs to be more security. Number one, nobody should be in there before 9:00 and after 4:30, except the employees that are assigned to that. People comes and people goes here. The access keyless that needs to be changed that only the employees in that office has access to it. There's so much identity theft now going on. All the election records, everything that, if you're in Lincoln County, your records are probably stored in there. Nobody should be in there with access to that unless it is during work hours that the employees is there. And I would ask the department heads, I'm not singling out anybody, a letter needs to be sent to each department head that nobody is to be in there before 9:00 and after 4:30 unless there is a reason for them to be in there. Now, we've got one, I believe he works in the assessor's office, but he works like on Saturdays. He would have access to that. But I, I want to do all I can, and I'm sure the commission does too, to safeguard the taxpayers and citizens' records.
Well, this is certainly an issue and one thing that is going to be remodeled in there. We talked about some of those issues when Mr. Whitman was here. One of the things that attorneys want to be able to have access so they can get in there and do plan books whenever they, after hours, Saturdays, whatever. And I think what we end up doing is granting that, but, but it is something that needs to be looked at. And I don't know, one commissioner, whatever you would, as I look at it, it's your call. You're only, you're the man that's responsible. And if you send me something that, this is what I want, I'll certainly support you.
Could you not, for the, the keyless entry, the barcode at his door, fix it to where after hours only his employees could access it?
Well, it's, whoever has access has been granted by either him or Mr. Whitman. Because on the form that's filled, that becomes anybody that has went in there. Now, law enforcement does have, and there's a master key for, that's kept at number one, excuse me, for any time of emergency that's needed to get in any office. And like I said, all law enforcement, the state troopers and the deputies have access to all keys. Anybody else to get into his office would have had authorization. Now, what we can do is on the machine, we can go to the county clerk's office and see who all has authorization and if on his request, remove everybody, including law enforcement if you want. But then if someone was to get in there and lock down the doors and hold everybody ransom or something, we couldn't get in there, you know.
I might see that list, okay?
Yeah, that's what you need to do is look at that and, and go, we went through this four years ago or something, I don't know, three years ago. Trying to decide what, who can get in, who couldn't.
Right.
That's a very valid concern.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll work on it.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else, please?
I'm here today to clearly explain why I feel the Furlsbury Community Center playground equipment is a topic for the county commission. Since the county commission owns the property, that the daycare was on and grant money was used to buy the two blue sleepy slides and one set of steps that are currently in the basement. That's why I feel it's important to bring up at the county commission meeting. This is the reason I was, I even asked about it. It was not a political move because it was insinuated by the Lincoln Journal. I work with special needs children. And several mothers that used to go to the daycare asked me to find out what happened to the daycare and where the playground equipment went. Because we have no public playground in Harts. And during school times, you can't use the school playgrounds. I previously stated, I did not know what had been ordered. And when I asked that, nobody had commissioned it and could tell me at that time. So I stopped by to look myself. The day I stopped by to look, there was water in the floor. I didn't say the water was up to my knees, but it got my shoes wet. The day I was there, there was standing water, and this has been an ongoing problem since the school was built, due to the drains that go to the Gondok River. There's drains down there that have shut-off valves. And this has been a problem since June C. Atkins was principal. And you can look back to how long ago that was. And for years, water was gotten in this area. They used to have a weight room in the basement of the Furlsbury Community Center. All that equipment had to be moved. And in the past, the teachers were actually asked to help clean up the water over the years. And on the way here today, I stopped to get gas, and I ran into a Harts resident who stated she went there last week for some kind of soccer practice, walked in the back, and there was standing water in the basement. I know your picture didn't show that, but, you know, my original comment was made a month and a half to two months ago. So, and I would assume that the water comes and goes with the rainfall. I'm not really sure. I'm not up there checking the drains every day. So I want to request the following information under the Freedom of Information Act from the county commission to help clarify the reasons why the children of Harts do not have a public playground to use. So I'm asking for the following information under the Freedom of Information Act, that the county commission agenda that has the discussion to purchase the playground equipment for the Furlsbury Community Center, the document identifying the approval to purchase the playground equipment, to document identifying specific equipment that was approved to be purchased for the Furlsbury Community Center, to document identifying who ordered the specific equipment, and to document identifying the company and contact person the playground equipment was ordered from, to document identifying the company that delivered the playground equipment, and who signed delivery confirmation of the playground equipment, the delivery time, the date, the location of the playground equipment, and the detailing the funding for the specific equipment that was approved to be purchased for the Furlsbury Community Center. And also, I'd like to have the invoice for the playground equipment for the Furlsbury Community Center under the Freedom of Information Act. And in order to help determine my status to assess the fee, you should know that I'm a concerned citizen. This is nothing political. Mothers come to me and said, you know, what are we gonna use? We have, we have no access to a public playground. And that is true. So I'd like to give the commission this lady, and I'd like to give you this lady.
And with regard to the, I think you might have alleged at a meeting as well that some of the equipment was at the commission administrator's house? I didn't put that in the paper. I'd like to point out.
No, I did not allege that.
It was suggested.
I said, I was told by someone that they had heard that a phone call was made by Ms. Johnson. And, and when I asked the question, I said, I'm not accusing Ms. Johnson. I said, I was told. They did not say that I said she had the equipment.
I'm just pointing out that, that our reporting didn't include some of the more colorful aspects of your commission references.
Well, that's what I was told about. But, you know, the people of Harts and the people of Furlsbury are citizens of Lincoln County, believe it or not, you know? And we do have needs in our area. And I sat here today and listened to the money being dished out all over the county. I have no problems with that.
But you, you might concede that our, our news report also reported one of the commissioners saying that discussions are ongoing to have the equipment perhaps used at Harts PK28. That was our front page story this week.
Yes, I did see that.
Okay.
So perhaps the commission been in negotiations with the equipment? So, and also, at the last meeting, Thomas said he'd been up there twice and he hadn't checked on us. So that's why I asked Thomas the next time, when you were up there, to take a look at it. When it's dry, I'm sure there's no problem. But when it rains, the basement floods. And they have tried to have classrooms down there and they've had to move them out. And the latest thing was the weight room, and, you know, they had to remove their weight equipment out. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I did not even know what was ordered, that's why I'm requesting it. You know, but when I went in there that day, there was two blue sleepy slides and one set of steps. And since then, I have heard, don't know if it's true, that the grant, there was grant money used to purchase that equipment. So that's why I'm asking for the truth under the Freedom of Information Act.
I would just like to state that after the last commission meeting, when it was requested that I go visit the community center, I called the community center board president and also another member, Rocky Adkins and Bethany Tony. And they went to the center with me. When you go into the basement, the very first room you walk in is the closest to the outside, so that room does flood. And there was a plastic piece of equipment there for the playground equipment. However, all of the equipment, 95% of it, was in the back rooms, and the back rooms do not flood. Actually, the equipment's some is metal, and if it had been flooded, the time it's been there, it would be rusted by now. So all I would like to say is, when, when we go to the legislature to get funding for projects, like you've seen here today from the Garrett's Bend Community Center, the crime watches, where the senior programs through LCOC and others, that it's very important that we're good stewards of the money and we spend the money appropriately. That money that was appropriated for the equipment was purchased for the equipment. However, by the time the equipment was delivered, the daycare had been dissolved. It was a program, the daycare itself, that was costing the county thousands of dollars. It wasn't making any money, it wasn't breaking even, it was costing thousands of dollars. And being a Harts resident and having a community center in Harts, and also knowing that we have had a daycare in Harts that no other part of Lincoln County has had, I feel very appreciative of the work that this commission has done for the Harts area. I know that there's many things that we need, we do need a playground, but other parts of the county do not have public playgrounds. All I would say is it's very important, when you're in a public meeting, not to use reckless language and talk about the equipment being stolen or being placed in water because when the legislators that get funding for these programs hear that kind of rhetoric, and it's not true. And I urge anyone that hears those type of things to bring it before the commission, before the school board, whatever government agency. But there's an appropriate way to bring those kinds of concerns in an inappropriate way. And when you make those kinds of public comments that are far from the truth, that the administrator has the equipment at her house, the equipment's been stolen, it's stored in water, if I was a delegate or senator that was helping us get money for these other programs, and I heard that, and I believed that, I would not get funding for us anymore. And those accusations were not true. So I would just say be very careful before you come to a public arena and make comments. And any comment or concern you have, we will look into those. But there's an appropriate way to bring those before us, and there's an inappropriate way.
Well, I also said that day I went up there, that it was dark and I seen spiders. I didn't even go further than those two back rooms that did not have a door on it, Thomas. I don't know if it has a door on it. Again, I haven't stopped back there. But today, someone told me that they were up there and walked down in there, and there was water in the basement again. So I don't know, I haven't been there.
The very first room does have water, but, and I would just say that I, I wish you had called me or Commissioner Vance or Commissioner McCann, and we could have went and looked at it. I would have went with you, but to come before the public and to say things that are outlandish and far from the truth, the, if you could go in the basement, walk to the other rooms, you'll see they're dry and there's lots of equipment. Actually, I sent the Lincoln Journal several pictures, and they're detailed pictures of the equipment.
Well, the question was, I didn't even know about the playground equipment. Mothers asked me about the playground equipment, and I said that in the meeting. I didn't know about the equipment, but I want to know about it now. I want to know what was ordered. And since the equipment was, was it grant funded?
Yes.
Okay, so if it was grant funded, you know, it needs to be, follow the grant rules. That was all I was saying.
I think it would be hard to follow the grant rules to put a playground in place for a daycare that doesn't exist. I think when we have a new school in the Harts area that currently does not have playground equipment whatsoever, and the principal of that school comes forward and says, we're having a hard time raising money for equipment for the playground, can you help us? And we say, yeah, we can help you with funding, but we also have playground equipment that is not being used. And I think another problem at the time we faced was that the school board had approached us for the idea of taking over the old high school as a community center. But we didn't know if we were even wanting to remain at Furlsbury. So is it important to put a playground in place just so you can say you have a playground there that you may not even own the property within months? I think it's a better utilized piece of equipment to go to a school that houses hundreds of kids.
Would not, if we use it for something other than what it was originally intended at the daycare when it got the grant, would we not have to file a, change the scope of that grant to do that? that grant to do that?
Hickory has already been closed down.
Well, I just know, not, not wanting to get in the middle of this thing, but I know when we closed the daycare center down, there was, there was a number of people didn't want to do that at the time. They wanted to maintain the daycare center, and I was under, at the time, thought that there might be another group wanting to establish a daycare center. But once we kicked out the old daycare center, the other people decided they didn't want to do it, or something along that lines, what happened. I think Darlene may have been, was interested in that and figured out she couldn't. So, I think there is a, there's a group of people up there that agree with what's being done right now, and there's a group that doesn't agree. The problem I've got with it is, I think, you know, we need to kind of get on the ball as a commission, if, if it's us that decides that. I mean, I don't, I don't know really it would be, but, and, and go ahead and see where we can utilize this the best and get it in there, because it's not helping anybody where it's at. And, and I can understand Thomas's timing of things, and whether it's going to be here or there, or whatever, but I think as soon as we can find where we can get the kids on it, that it's going to accomplish the things that the grant was supposed to be anyway, and that's to get these kids out, get them extra, keep doing things like that, and things of that nature. So, I mean, I, as I said, I think that if there's anything we can do to expedite the, the equipment being put out where the kids can use it, wherever it may be, I think we need to do that.
I think the only, go ahead. The only holdup at this point, the reason it's still stored, if you drive by the new school in Harts, you'll see that the playground is bare at this point. I think that the school system is waiting, I don't know either to when school lets out, where they have a time that they're going to put playground equipment in, and that's when the playground equipment will be taken to that school. So, it's still being stored in a, a dry, safe place, for the most part.
Was playground equipment not included in the budget for the building of the Harts pre-K 3A? Why not?
The, the school at Harts was funded through the school building authority. They do not fund any athletic facilities, playground equipment, anything outside the building, they will not fund. So, when the school was constructed, that's when the principal came to us and brought up the fact that they have no money for playground equipment, or they have very little, and was asking us to help them to, to meet the needs of the kids.
But is the playground equipment that is bought for daycare children, is it going to be applicable to children in pre-K through A?
Yeah, pre, preschool children.
Just pre-K?
Yes.
So, you'll still have to buy other playground equipment for older children? So, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, I have no idea what was purchased. You know, mothers ask me.
My commentary is that you're so concerned, but you don't serve on any boards up there that tries to have a community center in the community of Harts. All you do is look for problems, and you never solve them. But I would be willing to put you in charge of this equipment for the Harts community and let you get it installed, and I'll support you on it, even come and help put it up. But you take it and do it.
Well, how can I install it?
I'm going to ask the vote here from board.
But wait a minute, how can I install it if I don't?
No, I don't, wait, just let me finish. Let me finish. I would ask the commissioners, I can't ask, if they would vote to put you in charge of it, so that you could give us progress, how you, how you, staying coming along, any help you need and things like that. Now, go ahead.
Well, how am I going to be in charge of it if we don't even know where it's going to go to?
Well, I'm putting you, if the, if they would agree, put you in charge, and you go to Debbie Dennis, Principal Hartsville, and work with her, and you take the lead and make it happen. You're the community wanting this happen of us.
So, good.
I'll be happy to.
Motion second. Oh, yes. Just give us a report if you come in, how you're doing on it.
Well, let me know when I'm supposed to meet with everybody.
You're in charge now, it's up to you to set the meeting, and we'll send a letter to Debbie Dennis if you're coming.
And by the way, I've never been asked.
Well, you should be, you're the community.
Well, I know it's my community, and I do lots of things in my community, but I also work a full-time job, and I have an elderly mother. So, that makes it a little bit difficult. A little bit difficult, you know, who's been hospitalized many times lately?
I'm just saying, if you open your mouth, and you put your foot in it, you better use it.
I'll be happy to. Not a problem.
And, and I'm sure all of us, I would, I would be willing to, to help in doing something with that.
So, you all will help me get the equipment installed, actually, the physical manual labor?
I'm going to let you set up a plan, how you want to get it done.
You said you helped me.
I said, help get it set up. I helped West Hamlin two days getting theirs set up.
Okay.
And I want to touch on one more thing that was said, that we sat here today, and we witnessed groups come before the commission, and we, we helped fund those groups. I travel to the schools all the time, and I have Principals, Harts, Ranger, Midway, all these different schools say, well, we see West Hamlin, we see Hamlin, we see Lincoln County High School at the meetings getting funded, why don't we get funding? I said, well, first of all, to get funding, you have to ask for it. And those schools step up, and they ask for it. I told the people in Ranger, Harts, Midway, Duval, over and over, if you have a need, bring it to this commission, because one thing that we strive to do is to treat every one of the people.
And I reward people that will work, if we just, anything they can do to help the county, help kids, I'm in their corner.
And I think it's important, when us commissioners or commissioners are out talking to groups of people, that we, that we tell them that we have to bring what we're talking about before the commission. You know, we as the judges can't promise anybody anything. It takes all our vote to do anything with mothers.
Right.
And I think it's important, I know when I talk to people, I never promise them anything, because I know it's up to me and my commissioners to decide those type of things. So, I think it's very, and I think a lot of people kind of mistake, they hear what they want to hear. They hear, yeah, we're going to do this, when we really say, well, we've got to discuss it among ourselves, and then sometimes if it doesn't get translated over, we get to blame for, the commission gets blamed for not doing something when it, it really wasn't what the commissioner said to somebody, or something of that nature. So, I think too, we have to be really careful, just as we talk about what we say and don't say in public meetings, we, we have to be really careful as commissioners not to promise somebody something that we can't deliver personally, unless we're going to do it personally. Because, you know, I have no power by myself, neither does Mr. Rayner, neither does Mr. McCann. And it takes all of us to vote on these things. So, when I go to talk to Kevin, or whomever, I say, you know, I'll take it before the commission, because that's what, that's the way it should be done. And I think the problem we've had in the past, and not particularly with, with the commissioners that sit here now, but things were promised to people, just like the people over on, on Left Fork and over in there that don't have water, over in Gold, and things like that. We're, we're trying to get to where we can fulfill a promise that was made by people, not, not us, that was made many, many years ago. And it, to me, it seems a lot better to, to represent the people by saying, let me take what you need before the commission and see if we can work things out. And, and I think we, we try to do that a lot, but I think a lot of people, a lot of times when you talk to people, they think, well, you know, Mr. McCann's going to get this for me, or Doc Vance is going to get this for me, when it's not Doc Vance, it's not Mr. McCann, it's not Mr. Rayner, it's this Lincoln County Commission. And, and I do think we try our best in dealing with, with situations that come up, because these things, you, you get, you deal with situations you never had to deal with in your life that come up in, in this job. And, you know, I've may have had a lot of times that I've had to make decisions that are life and death decisions with my patients, but I feel comfortable with those, and I feel comfortable that that responsibility lies with me. But on this commission, I feel very much to be a part, one of three, and that we make our decisions as a group, and we make our promises as a group. And I think that's real important. I think that's, no matter what we do or what we don't accomplish, is to make sure that everyone knows how it works, you know, that, that, that it's done for the people, and our decisions that are made as a group are made for the people. A lot of the things we're talking about with the, with the grade school up there, I knew we had problems with water, because I had a medical student trying to stay up there, and things like that, and, and so I know that's been a problem for a while. But, you know, we really need to get to a point, and I, and I, I, I don't object to criticism of what we do, because I think that's what makes us better. It's what I criticize the medical students and doctors that I train, because that's what makes them better. That's what makes them not make mistakes in the future. So, you know, we're learning, I think I've learned, over the eleven years I've been here, I've learned a lot, and need to learn a lot more. And I know Mr. McCann's involved with many more agencies than I've been involved with, and knows how to work those agencies for the benefit of the people. But we, it's, it's all kind of like a team effort. We've got to be doing it as a team. We've got to be talking to people as, as a team, and say, this is what we can accomplish, or this is what we'll try to accomplish, because that's the way it works. No matter what I tell anybody, or what any of the other commissioners tell anybody, it takes all of us. And, and that's, that's why there's three of us here. You know, that's why the, our family fathers, the people made these rules as far as how we govern, did what they did, so that this wouldn't be just one person calling the shots, or this wouldn't be one person saying, this, this will be done for you. It takes all three of us. And I think, in, in, you know, and I have al, I haven't always been in agreement with, with my fellow commissioners, but that doesn't mean that I feel that they're not doing what they think's best for the county. We just disagree on some things about how to get it done. And, and, well, I think it is. I don't, I wouldn't want to be sitting on the commission that they agreed with me on everything. I mean, because I think everybody kind of sees that that's not a situation where you can do a lot of good for the people. But I think that we have, we try to frame our discussions as best we can to a positive end. And in that positive end, I don't think, I try to bring up anything that I disagree with them about, that I may not have a suggestion as far as a solution, or what may work better. And that's, that's to the whole public, I would say, I welcome you to come in and criticize us all you want, just tell us what to do to be better. You know, give us some idea, because you guys know what's better in your community than we do, even though I'm from Harts and live on Nine Mile. I don't know what everybody needs there. You all do. I, I don't live over on the other side of the county, and there's people that know what they need. And that's why there's three of us, that, because you'll run into Thomas when you won't run into me, or you run into Charles when, when we're not around. But what we do is take your information and bring it back to the commission and say, what can we do to help these people? And, and that's, I really think that we try to do that. And, and as I said, although I, I haven't been in agreement with them on quite a few things, I, I do agree that we do try to do better. And if you're going to bring a complaint to us, bring it to us. I'm, I'm not one to say, no, we don't want to hear it. But I'd really like you to have some suggestions of what we can do to make it better, because you can think of it, because you're there, you know what's going on, we don't. So, when you bring things to us, I'm sure we will all listen to you, and, and we're going to make the decision that we think's what's best in our head and our heart. And, and, but we don't know that information if you all don't get it to us. And just like the funding, if you need funding for things, just like Thomas said, you've got to say, hey, get us, get us the information, let us know you need funding for that. I, I treat people all the time for one illness, and they won't tell me about some of the other things that are wrong with them, that really impacts what goes on with that illness. Well, to do our job right, we really need criticism. We really need people looking at what's wrong and saying, hey, why don't you try this and see if you can make it better? And, and I really think that that can be done. That's the way you get things done. And, and I'm not putting you down at all. I mean, I think you, you, you know, you have a right to come in here and voice your concerns. I know some of your concerns, and I, I don't know others, but you have every bit of right to come in here and talk as, as anyone else does. And, but, like I say, I really would, anybody, not, not just you, anybody, if you have a suggestion that might make it better, and I do think putting you, working with this playground, pretty much going to get something done. You know, and that's what I think needs to, there's going to be people on those, that equipment, maybe sooner, because we've got confidence you can do that. But that's a solution to the problem. And that's what we'd like, if somebody's got a problem and they come before the commission and say, well, it's just like the fellow, the fellow that had the trouble with the drain over there, he knows that's a problem. I mean, he knows what's going on there, and it's just a matter of getting somebody to, and then you all would too, it's easy, when you block the big drain with a rock, it's a lot easier to see. A lot of the things that are dropped for us aren't that clear. They're not that, you know, figure out which is the best thing to do. So, what you got to do, you know, you got, you take all this information in, and, and hopefully the suggestions you give us, and then we pray a little bit about it, and then we come up with the right decision. A lot of decisions we come up with may not be the right decision, but we, I think, personally, I'd do my best to, to make a right decision. But we need your help. I mean, I've, I've, I've learned more, not particularly from my county commissioners on this job, but from the people of the county. Because I mean, I didn't know half the, half the people, as far as problems people were having. And it's not just one person in one area, it's a whole groups of families that have problems that, just like the project with the waste sewer control that we're doing over in, over on the Left Fork. If you look at these results, you'll know you can go swimming in that water now, but you couldn't. If you went, if you got in it with your, up your ankles before, you probably went home with some kind of wound on your toe. But now, it's, it's a much safer water. And we did all that by working together and working with the people of that area, and listening to what they had to say, and with Rick's help and Chris's help, you know, it, it, it makes differences in the lives of everybody, and not just now, but in the future. And I think that's the, you know, I'll be leaving the commission in December, but I think that we still need to bring these type things before the commission with, with suggestions on what, because we need help. I mean, I, I mean, you guys know better than anything what's going on in your community. And I think we need help in making our decisions, and we depend upon you all for that.
Nothing but good solutions.
That's right. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'd just like to say one thing. The day that I brought that up was the day I heard about it. And the only thing I knew about the Furlsburg Community Center was it used to be the Furlsburg Community Center and Veteran's Center. And all I knew was the County Commission owned the property. And I understand now there's a board, and, no, I've never been to a board meeting, don't know what time they have the dates and times. I've never addressed the board, but I came to you all because you owned the property. And that was the person, the only people I knew to ask about it. If I offended anyone, I want to apologize. That was not my intention at all. So, but that was not my intention, that was what I was told, and that's why I asked the question in that way. So, and I just want to see a solution to it. I didn't have a solution to it, because I don't have all the answers. And that's why I'm asking all this information under the Freedom of Information.
I have a similar question. You say you reward people money? Is that what you said?
What'd you say?
Did you say you reward people money at work?
Reward?
That's what, that's what Mr. McCann said a few minutes ago.
That's what you heard us there, I guess.
That's what I'm asking. I'm, I'm, I heard, I, I heard you say, I reward people money at work.
I, I said, I reward people who would actually get out and work.
Okay, right. Okay, I, I misunderstood that.
You sure did.
I would like to make the statement with this gentleman, I was awarded $250 for being an outstanding volunteer at the Big Oak Community Center about four years ago. Thank you.
Maybe we should, I don't know.
No, I thought when you were talking to the school, you said you reward, I was like, it's just shocking, weird. I'm sorry.
Next thing on the agenda, is commission concerned? Commissioner Vance?
No, I, I, as I said, I attended the Pound Punchers thing last Thursday, or whenever it was, and they walked you up and down the road, you and Thomas. But I, I really am impressed with these people. They, they, they are doing what we all should be doing. I would like them to watch their diet a little bit better, and some of them not smoke, and things like that. Of course, I, I'm that way. But they, they really make a difference in that area, in not only their own lives, but the people that are watching them and, and seeing what they're doing. They're leading by example, I think. I did attend via phone the special session of commission to label Abby, was that Tosted?
Yes.
Tosted. But the only, the only concern I have, it was brought to me yesterday by a person on Nine Mile Creek that had received voting cards for herself and her husband. They, you know, the, they were sent out updated voting cards, and they'd not talked to anybody about it, and they hadn't voted since 1986, so I didn't know how they would get those cards.
There's two ways to have, the state sent out NCOA cards for you to upgrade your address, you know, the girls that we had to come in, and then the people who's gone around, if they hadn't been there and they knew their address, say, well, they couldn't get to your house because it was gated, but they know that Charles Vance's address, physical address is 72 State Street. Then they would have written your name down, and we would have went into the system, updated the address, and sent you the voter card.
Okay, so her question was because no one had ever contacted her and/or her husband, how they'd get these cards. And it had the new 911 address on it, didn't have the original address they filed in 1986, which was the last time they voted. And I didn't know, you know, how we'd go back. Is it okay to go back that far to pick these people up and give them a change of address? I know when I changed mine a few months ago, I came in and filled out a form and had it changed over and things like that. And I didn't know if, you know, to me, number one, they weren't eligible if it was 1986 last time they voted.
But they're inactive and we can still go in there and we give all the changes. You know, as long as they're on the system, they're active or inactive, we still do the changes, we send them new registration cards. It doesn't make them active that we sent them the cards, but it's changing everything in the system.
Yeah, because so we can automatically send these change of addresses on 911 to people on the new cards. I mean, is that, because I don't know, because they were asking me, why didn't we get these cards? And both of them were signed by Christie, I think.
Dr. Vance, or Mr. Vance, I should have said. Either one of them. We're trying to get these people off the record. And they sent X amount of letters out before, cards and that. But if there's one item on that that's not correct, you've got to do it all over again. So we're trying to get everybody notified and this and that now that they want to update or whatever.
Well, I just want to make sure, I mean, I'm not saying anything is going wrong. They were concerned the fact that they hadn't been approached by anybody that hadn't voted in over 20 years, that they were getting new updated addresses and voting cards, you know, and I told them I didn't know, but I would bring it to the mission to make sure that everything was okay. Because all they got, they got two different envelopes, one to the husband, one to the wife, with their new addresses and voting registration.
And had it been the system completely, you know, the workers in the past did their job in purging the roads, then they would have repeated it.
Correct.
But where it was not done, and hopefully with these poll books and everything, that bringing the history to there, they will officially be off.
Well, I just wonder, why didn't we purge these people before we sent out the cards? I mean, you know, 20 years.
We can't now because they were not known.
They couldn't be inactive.
Right.
You have, there's so many steps that you have to do.
Oh, I understand, I understand that. My question was though, where do you stop at? I mean, are we sending people cards of, you know, 30 years unvoted or probably?
As long as they're active or inactive, they will still get a card.
That's correct.
Until they are completely canceled and off there, we will not send them a card.
So since they haven't voted since 86, let's just give an example. They got their card, let's say they do not vote this election, they'll be inactive. How long from this election will they actually be removed from the books?
See, that's the problem I have is I wonder that, because when they're sending the cards, restarted that process.
No, it did not.
Voting, voting was started.
No, it's your voting history.
Okay, now, how long would it take if we had approached, if we went through and saw they hadn't voted for 20 some years before we sent out the cards? How long would it took?
Well, they should have been removed in the 90s.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Two general victories.
It wasn't done back then, you know, that's recent Christie's got, and we're all in this situation.
Well, I was just wondering why we didn't, you know, to me it seemed, you know, we might have jumped the gun to give these voting registration to people that really aren't legally, I mean, it's been over 20 years since they voted.
Well, they are legal.
There is another side to it. They could, I think, what I always, I debate this thing myself, but what I always come down to is if you don't do something to show that you know they're out there, they could come back and say, well, you took my name off here. I really had planned on getting back active and voting and you've removed me and you've interfered with my rights to vote.
But doesn't the law say I had to come in and file a change of address to get that new address? I mean, that's what I understood it to be. And that's the question I have and how you can change a voter's address and send them a new card without, you know, these people's, they showed me their old address and their new address and everything. And I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying to me, to me, you'd been better off getting the correct addresses, whether they were alive or dead or whatever, than sending out these new cards because, because they have quite, I mean, and I don't know, I'm just going to basically, if anybody gets a new card and says, why did I get this new card in the mail? I'll basically say, well, you went to call the county clerk, so I was talking to them. But to me, we're having gone through, changing my address and things like that and filling out a new voter's registration card and signing it and everything, and my wife signing it. I wonder how you get by that in doing what we're doing.
Because we're redistricting and we have to go on to the voter registration system through the state. There is a place to where we have redistricted and it was due to field work. It does not change them being active or inactive. They will still be on the poll books, even if we were use the old poll books, they still would be printed out as a voter in that precinct.
I guess, I understand what you're saying. The question would be, if I wanted to change something in my voter registration, the address, address in particular, I don't have to actually physically come to the courthouse, fill out the updated address?
You have to show verification.
So, I mean, how are we, what does the law say?
Through the redistricting, that's what we're doing now, is a field worker went out. And I said, said once again, when they went by, say, I'll use Dr. Vance, they went by his house. And I don't know this to be, in fact, I'm just using this as a scenario because you're here. And your place was gated and they could not go there. But yet they knew on a mailbox or something that Charles Vance lived at 72 State Street. They would write down Charles and Earth Vance because they knew that and they would put out here in the notes, gated. And when we would go down to that, we would put Market Green, that we changed it in there that it's 72 State Street. And we would send new cards. Now, if those cards come back, we know that they are not, that's not their address. But we have to do something to try to change these people because of the redistricting, notifying you that you do not vote at Mckiff Grade School no longer, you vote at Ranger. We have to make an attempt to let these people know that we have redistricted and they no longer vote at such and such, they vote at such and such. It's no longer precinct 20, it's now precinct none. We have to make that attempt. And if that, you know, they come back, then attempt failed and we will put a note in there that.
So sending the cards out is the attempt?
Yes.
Okay. Because I made sure, you know, these people live right by the road, by the way. I mean, they don't have any gates or anything.
No, I'm just using that as a.
And that was a problem, I think, is they couldn't understand. Because I told them, I said, well, you know, we had people coming around for this redistricting and had you do this. And they said, we didn't see anybody, we're kind of afraid of what to do about it. And I said, well, then I'd just ring up for the commission to make sure that we were, that everything was being done properly. And I told her I would stop and talk with her on the way home today. So that's really the only concern I had was, to me, it seems like the people that, say like myself or anybody else that moves and comes in and changes their address to get her card and everything, there's a little more of a burden on us to do that than it would be otherwise because everybody else is getting them sent to their house and things, you know.
There should be a paper trail saying you moved from here to here and.
Yeah, there is. I mean, we just have to show verification of that and things.
This year, what we're doing now is the redistricting of the county commission done for the whole county. So Clark's office is having to make an attempt to win tomorrow, or Friday is their deadline to change all these. And there's going to be a lot that's not going to get changed and they're not going to get notified.
Right. In Park County, they sent postcards out to everybody saying, here's your new district. But they didn't change anyone's voter's registration to, because I know he moved or I know he lives here, that I automatically switch him. That just is not.
Well, you'd have to change them. You would have to change them because that precinct 20 no longer exists. So what are you going to do? Not give them notification that they no longer vote in precinct 20?
No, if they change precincts but not change his physical address. If he moved from 123 Main Street to 126 Main Street, I can't just change his house, right?
If you don't mail it out to the correct address, you don't get.
The postcards forwarded.
No, they did not.
They, we got 4,000 back, returned. Trying to notify people.
I guess one question. Has the secretary of state been through this whole process? They know what we're doing?
Oh, yes, they're the ones who told us what to do.
Well, I mean, I think I'm okay with that as long as, I mean, if that's what they're trying to do. To me, it seems like a lot of waste of money to get 4,000 stamped envelopes back, when if you really could identify who to send them to to start out with, you'd have a lot better way of doing it.
You have to attempt to notify every person.
That's what they told us to do.
But that's my question though, is whether the way we were notified is the correct way to do it by sending them a voter's card or a new address. That's just my question.
Here's a scenario.
I just say to the commissioner there, the state has had like four people in here for X amount of weeks instructing, do this and do that, and you got to do it this way. That's what really, I mean, they're up to date here, I don't mean to say anything to anybody, but we're trying to follow their policy.
Right. And if you get a chance to talk to them, Merle, just ask them about this scenario we're talking about, these people. Because these people are concerned if they wind up getting new voters registration and it's been 25 years since they voted, you know? And that's a concern of mine because it's a concern of theirs. If that's what we're doing, that's fine, as long as that's a legal way to do it, I'm fine with it. But to me, it seems like an inefficient way to do it and not a very accurate way to do it, which is much accurate. And I understand we're under constraints from the state and things of that nature, but you'd think they'd want it to be as accurate as possible too. But if you'll bring that up to them, I'm sure if they're going to be down there, you can just ask them, say, hey, Doc had a, you know, somebody bring them a registration card and said they hadn't voted 25 years, is it still okay doing this because it don't sound right? You know what I mean?
They should have called in and canceled their voter registration.
We'll play catch up.
A scenario, a similar scenario has got to do with this. I received a phone call from a lady who has worked the election for probably 25 years. She received in the mail, I think for yesterday, a card from the county clerk's office, and I don't know what type of card on it that it was, but they got their mail at 5 o'clock, that's what time the mail's delivered. And it said that it had to be back to your office on that date that they received it. And it said that the woman had not voted in the past so many presidential elections. And she is a faithful election worker who always has voted. She's in her golden years. So I told them, I said, we'll call Mr. Hugh or talk to him or call the secretary of state to get it figured out because you've obviously been a voter because you couldn't have worked the election for all these years. And she always votes, you know, in her precinct where she works her precinct. And she was very upset because she's elderly and just didn't understand, you know? So I advised her to call you guys and get it worked out.
Goodness.
But it did happen, I mean, to an election worker, so.
And that's amazing, they beat that her off and then these other people, they get.
Well, this is what she said. She said, well, so, you know, the times I may have had to vote provisional, has it really been held in? I said, I don't know. You'll have to talk to the county clerk.
All right. Nothing else to do, Mr. Vance?
No, I'm fine.
Randy?
I want to narrow my list down a little bit. I got a phone call from Phil Sizemore. He's a man that is active in the Ranger community. He was concerned about the Banatters Creek Ranger Bottom Park. And his concern was the fact that the grass had not been cut and it was strictly long and the kids were playing there and he was fearful that one of them could be hurt. So I called Jerry Swanson and Jerry Swanson is sending one of the community correction, or community crews to Ranger to cut the grass and gave Jerry, Mr. Sizemore's phone number and asked that they stay in touch and the community crew can hopefully take care of the grass for the entire summer, so. I'm not going to talk about anything else.
Did they do that on the, we used to pay for that or park the way? Do you want to pay for that?
I don't think that's the department on.
Oh, it's not the Ranger Park?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they used to pay somebody to do that, like, no.
Are you aware in your district that they're trying to close a public road to a cemetery?
Yes.
And what date is that moving at that time?
Do you remember the date? The date for the road closure?
Meeting that our, like, on.
What time's the meeting? Evening time or daytime?
Is this a done deal already? I mean, the guy put up the posts for the gates and everything, he's got cement in the ground and they travel the road around and all this. But to me, like, this is a pretty crooked deal. He knows the answer before he goes to the meeting.
This commission's already on record of being against the closure.
They approached us last fall, we didn't support it. But I did see they had in the papers, only I didn't understand where they were going. They're still present, but apparently got a public hearing on it. I'm assuming that that time the decision will be made, not on that.
Is it at the new school, Kevin? When was the meeting being held?
Harzah School.
The old Harzah?
They already said it was Harzah Leadership.
It's probably the primary, 388.
The new school, they got all the information they should do.
Okay. Just a couple announcements. We're having such a good time here. I think what it is, we're not going to meet for the next meeting and first of May, we decided to cut you down to that. Just an announcement about FEMA will be here May the 10th, 5 to 7 to have a meeting to see about information about flood insurance and all the problem flooding, things like that. So it's May the 10th, 5 to 7, courthouse, room 103. Just a couple items. I was contacted by a person and really what we're working, I'm trying to resolve it, I'm not sure, but it's an issue across this whole county. This has happened to be on Scary Creek outside of Hamlin here, but during all the heavy rains, the roads to the family cemetery was pretty much destroyed. And basically, what can we do? I said, well, let me get with Allenhold and we'll see what we can talk to, find out through FEMA or whatever. They are looking at it, FEMA is, if this guy pursues it, I guess. But the problem is, across this whole county, used to be Department of Highways, lender and grader to go get roads improved to the old family cemeteries and things, but they can't do that anymore. And the guy asked me, he said, isn't there something the county could do? Talk about the county commission. Doc said, boy, you learn a lot of things in here. I said, well, I don't know that we can. We've all been willing to try to help get things resolved. And so I don't have a solution, but I want to lay the issue out for people to be thinking about, how could we or should we work with various people across the county to improve cemetery access? And of course, then you got the issue about a lot of cemeteries, headstones are down and all this need to be improved. I thought maybe one of the possibilities, not that we need another community corrections program, but maybe the community corrections people, if we had some equipment, that they might be able to help, you know, it might be something we might want to get into, they don't want to. But somebody probably does need to help with getting access to cemeteries. Because the guy told me, he said, well, I aim to get a doser on, and they want to save $5 an hour just to get a doser in there to cut the road.
I think if, those things help is if we help people like that, right? You know, that's what we're here for, is to make sure that, and not just particularly graveyards and things, but these are important things to people. It's what makes us what we are, it's what keeps us together. I mean, you know, if you, it's your family you're going to visit and not be able to get to your family because you own a car instead of a four-wheel drive, you know, that's just